Good afternoon. I am called to order and reconvene the special meeting of the Scottsdale Unified School District. We will have another roll call, starting from my far left.
Nancy Kravitz.
Allison Duckham.
Pam Purdy.
Kim Harmon.
Kim Harmon is here, and Barbara Perleberg. All board members are present, and we do have a quorum. Our first item is item 6A. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, thank you. I was like, nothing else off in my life. Collective allegiance, please, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The citizens of this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty, all.
So our first item is 7A, possible action item, approval of revisions to the teacher employment agreement. Governor, would you like to present?
Sure. We, um, government board, we're going to be presenting some concerns that we have in hiring processes and practices here in Scottsdale, but we have also invited our F D A to present some concerns from their perspective, and we had said that we would allow them to go first, so I believe, Ronnie, is it you? Okay, so you're up first.
The government board has been in a hurry to talk about this. But, um, I've got to be up for 15 minutes, but I wanted you to be prepared, and just want to frame a little bit about how this happened. So on Tuesday, plus of 48 hours ago, we were told the teachers that there's going to be a massive change that's going to be presented for the board, or a vote approval. Then, a few hours later, after we were told, we were granted the opportunity to present our case, so it's almost felt like an issue that some of you, as we were going up in front of the jury to share, to plead our case, and depending on which time, get the better argument, or anything like that type thing. So I want to frame that because, in my opinion, when we talk about working together, that it just seems far, far away from that. So, I, I want you to realize that, at least the teachers, and I'm speaking on behalf of them currently, this is not an example of teachers going to speak in the room, this is not an example of teachers going to speak in court. Putting teacher info, voice, and professional experience on the 15-minute block, maybe 11 hours prior to a vote that you're being held to vote on, is just more than helping the decision.
Well, I, let me understand something. So, do you want this 15 minutes, or would you prefer not to know?
Well, absolutely. I just want to frame in terms of how this 15 minutes is going to work.
Because the government board, the government board did not do this, Ronnie. That was the decision the superintendent made, and I would ask you to be respectful and gracious to the government board in your presentation.
And I feel like I am, and I will be, sometimes, I'm just sharing that ground about what got into this issue right now, so. Um, let's talk about Suzie. Um, not a little Suzie, actually, this is Suzie right here. So Suzie's student teacher right now, and she's fired up, and she's ready to go to the teacher's floor and get orders upon her bulletin boards, right, because she gets kids coming in. Um, and she, Suzie knows that she is, uh, she's got pretty tight cattle. She knows that there's teacher quarters, right, everybody's heard the papers, the headlines. So for her, it's a matter of, where do I want to go, right? So what district do I want to work for? Um, yes, money is a factor for new teachers, though, like, the idea of money may not be as prominent. Um, luckily for Suzie, she has friends that work in multiple districts. So, if Suzie were to add her friend, unless she has a friend that works for Scottsdale, and there's a reason why I'm sharing this, I will get to that point. Uh, she has friends that work for Scottsdale. Even if she had a friend that works for Scottsdale that, hey, I want to know about your students. Like, tell me about them, is this a great way to teach? I think Suzie would be pretty fired up to come here. And if the conversation is, hey, I want to know about your classroom, your colleagues, your site, I think for the most part Suzie would be pretty fired up. When Suzie says, I want to know about your district, so what process do teachers have in terms of your district? I don't know what her, her reaction is going to be, um, but, um, what, what do we think our teachers would say if they were asked that question? I mean, that's, that's, I guess. So, if our goal is to retain teachers, we seem to somehow start taking action or making decisions that drive the current teachers out, or discourage them from speaking up, or take away any further voice they have from being involved in our conference. Uh, so that's, let's keep Suzie in mind, that we can go through this presentation. So, one thing that I just want to talk about is a false narrative that we're fed, and we're fed at the national level, at the state level, at the local level. The whole idea of, well, let's do it less for students, and then we're doing what that could be, and let's do it less for teachers, but then easier to do with that for students. Somehow those two things are something exclusive to each other, and they don't have to be. In fact, those things are more closely related to each other, whereas this is what, it should be. In fact, there are districts out there that are doing it, supporting students and they're supporting teachers. In fact, there are teachers out there that are supporting students by making supporting teachers their co-ed. Uh, teachers, here seems to be used sometimes as a verdict, that we are going against a district's students, or we are going against a model that has been created and shared with us, but very good without very much notice, um, where sometimes we have, we are just complainers that don't really work hard for our students. And I hope that's not the case, even more than, I'll have to come to my house anytime you want, maybe after school, maybe for like 2:00 in the morning, where we're working out these four schools. When most of the things we can complain about are related to work. We want really, really great curriculums, we want teachers to have time to collaborate, we want to have quality, impactful, professional development. Like, you hear what teachers want, almost everything really comes from their teachers. In fact, we want to be the best person for teachers that we can be for teachers. So when we hear that we do not have the voice, or we are not part of the, right, that got, we are not part of the creation process, and always being told that we're, we're given directives, it does not motivate teachers to want to stay in a district that doesn't necessarily give a lot of it. Right, we have a teacher shortage to try to attract new positive teachers, and at the same time, our current teachers somehow actually are going to do it, and we need to put them out. Um, so, overall, I'm going to get to the topic, but the one they gave up in front of you is a very, very big one, so I, as sharing, please do not downplay the importance of this vote, it's not about transferring one, this is a much bigger story, this is a much bigger process, and it's very, very different to the teachers, in terms of what their rights, their protections, their qualities being. So let's talk about the department chair. I want to do this quickly. Um, yesterday, I sent you guys just some language, so we can get it out of the way, so if you guys got that, or you may have heard me do this. I want to give you just some philosophy. So when I think of the department chair as a math teacher, my department chair is the person that comes to me and we meet every single Thursday at lunch, by choice, and says, hey, here are the conversations going on at the federal level, here are the conversations going on at district level at the department chair. Here's the feedback that we want to get, what do you think about this, how should this work, how will this look? And then we give that feedback back, and the next thing they need is the department chair to share the information, right? Because the department chair is essentially another outlet for teachers to have voice to share with. The process currently gives a good amount of power to principals, and a good amount of power to the teachers there, so it almost seems like it's a win-win. I don't know why we're creating, why we're fixing something that's not broken, and I just want to hit on this, you guys can have a degree for yourselves to do this, but, um, the department chair is not a compliance officer. Like, I want a department chair that's going to come back to me and challenge if my thinking is wrong, and I want a department chair that can go to their principal and challenge that, or challenge the curriculum specialist to say, hey, at our site, this didn't seem to work, we need to come up with a better system. That's who the department chair is, is the actual, someone who's representing us from leadership standpoint. So, I don't know the details of the proposal, but I, I heard pieces of it where it's the fight principal that hand-picks the department chair. So I think to myself, being a principal, and I'm not thinking that because I'm not a principal, um, the, the system we would create if we had principals just, just pick certain people, regardless of how often the principal is, you get some principals that say, I'm going to pick these six, that will all agree with me, that will all think like me having been to grade, and, and unintentionally, why it teaches would, so they kind of get put in their place once again. So, in terms of the department chair, this system we have works really well. In fact, we have a system that says, if your department chair is not doing their job, you as teachers in the department should start the reversal process, or the principal doesn't think they're doing their job, the principal in that can also start the reversal process. There are checks and balances in this. Um, I don't know where the department chair, they, like, they came from, but I think it'd be awesome to have a group of leaders around the table that can challenge them, and just say, hey, new principal, even for a new principal, this is how we stop things that are school, the new principal says, hey, let's try this, and they go, great, let's bring that back to teachers, let's get feedback, let's work together to come up with an actual solution that everybody has thought. And that's the role that the department chair takes. And taking that power away from the teachers' voices will instead of essentially take that leader that I look up to, that I know is advocating for being at the school that the site is at, that's the easy one. At least I was creating this presentation. Transfer process is not so easy, right? Because when we talk about transfer process, I, I think calling it transfer process means it a little easier. This is a process that deals with people's jobs. This is a process that deals with M P, where they're going to be at, what their job looks like here, if they have a job, depending on whether it's a transfer. So, um, the philosophy, again, I sent this to you, but just, I'm going to read it quickly. Transfer policies are intended to honor our teachers' commitment and service to the students who are involved during the needs of students' progress, and serve students' development. The following transfer process is based on the premise that any movement of teaching, of teaching staff must be real, and since they are able to deal with unforeseen circumstances, be timely and nondiscrepanous. That's great, right? I don't, I don't, I can't imagine anybody looking at this and be like, no, this is a terrible policy. This is a joint philosophy that was created before. My guys, you four, are just in a great time. So here's the timeline. And I think the biggest hang-up with the timeline where it's like, hey, we want to hire women and teachers, there's tons of really great teachers out there, right? There are, we have teaching now both Suzie, not both, Suzie, who's student teacher now, we need to have a chance to get Suzie and bring her into Scottsdale and have her, she has to be a phenomenal teacher, and maybe even a teacher leader to impact other teachers, right? So I, I get the purpose. This is not a, I, I can't see the size of the coin. I get it. The timelines start on the 17th, end on April 30th. Right? There are two points that I'm, first, I'm assuming there's a hang-up there. One of them is made as a proposal, that if there's any openings in the district, they cannot be posted externally. If we currently have a teacher in Scottsdale that's unassigned, meaning there could be one unassigned math teacher, and we're going to need 3 openings for math, we can't post that as a discipline. That's, that's where I'm assuming is, is one of the deep issues here, where we're trying to get people in. Uh, the second one is the first unassigned teacher, which doesn't happen until April, right? April time, some teachers almost graduating, some of them are locked in contract, and others. Uh, so if you think they're on what else? For a transfer, every year that I've been done research, this is my fifth year where I'm like drowning in transfers, um, we always stop on the timeline every single year. We say, let's, let's shorten up the timeline, can't we? If we didn't get our teachers free like two months earlier, I'm a fullness, completely have more. There's a process along the way, and if you're not sure what the parts of the process are in your rationale, I urge you to not be so quick to get rid of it, because part of it on our teachers, while also honoring principal choice in this transfer process, and this is the last part where, hey, we take care of our employees. The problem still lies in that we may have 29 openings, but we can't hire everyone because we have one unassigned teacher in that position. That's, that's really kind of the, wherever we get stuck. Um, I will tell you that, I don't have the number, so I haven't had a chance to get the number, but as you would see, this is how jobs vary earlier this week. We have had people come and say, hey, I'm in Nebraska, I'm in math, I graduated, or I'm a new teacher. Scottsdale does like a pre-entire, and if things look good and, and everything goes forward, they offer them contracts. So, this is a stop, as you would see, from offering people contracts externally. Their contract does not have a site. Their contract just says they're going to work for Scottsdale, and the idea behind it is, when we get here, because we have teachers of our own that have busted, that have worked really, really hard, um, in Scottsdale, and they are owed a position somewhere where second we get their contract, plus with them, they are here. But by the way, along the way, we already have teachers that have, and we can just play them at a different time. It makes sense in my head because I've just been doing it for so long, that's like, is that too, too word? Is there any clarification on that? Okay. Um, so while the exception may be this, realize, we have people that have contracts, and we're writing teachers that haven't even graduated yet, that have contracts that are working for Scottsdale. I would love to look at the data, see what those numbers are. Like, if we have 30 math openings, do we have 10 teachers that already have contracts for math visits in Scottsdale, or we don't know where? I just be curious, we kind of, um, what's the number truly are, in terms of how they vote? And while we're raising the self-position, new position, um, the lack of value that our current teachers look past us, we, we got, we'll talk about that, will create more of a negative reputation to the world, and we know this, right? We've been part of this before, that'll have a negative impact on where the teachers are going to be. More importantly, we are pushing our current teachers out, we're creating a worse teacher shortage, in a sense, by making decisions using this process. So, we're still offering contracts, we want to change the timeline, which, by the way, in terms of negotiation, no one's opposed to that. We bring it up on the table, it's a matter of, we want to change the timeline that we're here, instead of months before, months before when you try to figure out what the shortage is. In fact, people stood up here, I think a lot of people were being, and shared a concern about transfers, staffing, and it was kind of disregarded, and this is not part of the other way. So here's something about transfers. Um, it is not an evaluation system. That is that the transfer committee, we say, this is not how we get bad teachers out, quote-unquote, bad. There's a process for that, and that makes everyone important. Um, it's subjective, they are equitable, I'm not going to, I think I may have even said this, you may have seen this, um, earlier, so. So here's what's true in the policy. Um, essentially, if we lose the extinguishers, little remaining states that our teachers, that our teachers have a voice, a faith in head committees that's going to happen, of really personally, when I was told this, I was just more upset that there are literally tens of hours that I'm going to, that might get, because there's not the transfer committee, which all that work pretty much got thrown out, like, I can only imagine what other teachers feel who volunteer and give up their time, and that are, that are putting their place in terms of their voice. Um, but a lengthy teacher turnover, it fixes an issue that's been created for one school, so I think that some of this is intended coming from the cornautic success initiative, where we don't have enough positions to fill those spots. So we're essentially going to disrupt other schools in terms of transfer, this is a dilemma. Uh, and during transfer, you guys personally brought it up, this, the transfer committee negotiates. Uh, teachers who attended the cornautic success initiative meetings in the morning brought it up, but they're really wise answers. And I'm sharing this because I'm trying to emphasize this point of, while I knew the conversation happened right then and there, the teacher leaders have thought, hey, this might happen, right? Do you foresee anything coming up in the future that might still originate our plan that we need to look at higher, instead of assuming that we're right in the middle of the transfer? Because the cornautic issue left us the rest of the time, focusing on just that specifically to figure that out. But overall, this process, and the history has grown very successful, and honors our current teachers, provides excellent consistency in community from year to year. By the way, there are certainly examples of a transfer process having nightmares. Like, everything else, there are always examples, but I assure you, in 95 years, those random scary examples of transfer have been annihilated, they are not enough. We've seen that in mine, uh, as we go through this. Uh, and if we're concerned about filling classes, that's a madness to do the process, we should also be concerned about decisions we make and how they impact current teachers that are already in Scottsdale. Um, by the way, I don't know, I mean, don't need to answer this, but, just ask yourself, when was the first time you heard about this proposal? When was the time when this was shared for the board? Because Dean DeFurde did not hear about it, train for committee did not hear about it, and no one really heard about it in any further detail until the teachers. That is not how, that's not how we should do this. You need to come up here to pretend like they, it doesn't show a lot of working together, in fact, it shows the operating. Have you ever seen House, the doctor, or something? Okay, so, let me, it's just an hour show, I'm almost done. It's an hour show, and they spend the first 40 minutes treating this patient of like a case in a hospital, and they treat the patient, and then the patient gets worse, and then they treat them for this, and they get worse, and they treat them for this, and they get worse. And 40 minutes of this, almost every single show, maybe that's, I know I watched them this, but after 40 minutes, you go, we were treating this symptom, we were treating the actual diagnosis, we are putting sandings on these things along the way. That's what this felt like as I was hearing this, is, you need to stand up here, I'm talking about transferring the department chair, but you'll be up here again and again, over and over, because you seem to be dealing with a system of how things are done versus the actual diagnosis. So I, to the board, I want to ask you a question. The importance of this vote, like, sounds like, like, like gut check, because I, I can't imagine where you are right now, because I feel like, you have to vote one way, partially because that shows support for the district, and then you're like, there's teachers, like, it's, it's, being a board member, I can't imagine how like torn you are about this, like, your gut changes depending on how you talk here. Uh, I, I do want to let you know that, based on how you vote, will be a very, very critical fair message to teachers, um, about where, about the part we play in the process, about whether we, our values as professional voices, and whether, I guess whether we're, we're just holding it in our, our place, um, I can kind of go be your habit, don't, don't run with others. Um, I brought the D A because, I don't know if you know what D A is, this is not from, this is not Dr. Rizzo, this is not Dr. Stitt, right? This is decades upon decades of teachers and board members, and district administrators, and site administrators, putting together a document that makes sense, putting together a document that says, hey, how do you make sure we value people? How do you make sure we put protections in place because you're doing what's best for students? You're really a teacher, be like, I'm going to work for students today, and they want to have their recs, you don't have to say that out loud, we just go in and do what's best for students. But this thing is what, is, is what makes us feel like we have enough work where I can go in and help me spend time on what I need to spend time on teaching. Uh, while you're going to hear the other version of this, and their rationalize the changes, I prefer you to really consider what the severity and the impact of your vote is going to be. Thank you for giving me the time, I appreciate it. If I came off bruised any part of the way, I hope you know we won't have that. Not my style, thank you.
Kim, are you hearing all right?
Yes, I can hear fine, thank you. Every day I work in Scottsdale, I learn something new about the market. Every day, I am amazed at the community that has lost the focus of the market in the private sector during the pandemic. They can change rates in the last 10 years. The economy has gone through a bit of a downturn, we are finally beginning to rebound, but what happened is, during those downturns in Arizona, we lost thousands of teachers. The points of the favorite owner has lost, and insured 2,000 teachers publicly. The market is competitive. I traveled as a superintendent, as a superintendent in human resources, to places like Cole Minnesota, trying to sell sunshine in Arizona to the Y S E U to come here. Michigan, I traveled to South Dakota, and North Dakota, I traveled to New York looking for diversity in teachers. So I hired a proper nanny, and it's very hard to get folks to come to Arizona because of our T P A, my own agency. And then the word on the street that our state doesn't necessarily respect the T P A, okay, there's so many odds that we're taking Arizona. Now, Scottsdale's where we're fortunate, Scottsdale's been able to practice, and it's even important to note that. Uh, we have had openings every year, but we didn't have to fulfill them. But there are the teachers that also say that have their practice up there. We have districts that pay more, we have districts that have different culture environments, we have districts that are hiring teachers in November, December, they get out very early and, and make those hires. So, one of the points that Ronnie made is, well, Scottsdale had a fair, didn't we hire a lot of teachers? We, I believe we hired nine, ninety. Last year, we had multiple of these. I'm going to go through some statistics that might help some of this conversation. There are challenges in hiring teachers, not just in Scottsdale, in the state of Arizona and in our matrix, but we are responsible for Scottsdale, and we are responsible for the systems that we have here. So, Ronnie said there was a timeline, that there is a timeline of conversation that occurs, and the cornautic success initiative is just a season. But in reality, um, on February 24th, there was an email from the co-chair, Ronnie, the co-chair, Ms. Doyle, in H R, that said, hey, look, there's going to be a placement of the in-stake staff before you hire out those. And what had happened is, we had had 11 teachers that had opted out of the cornautic initiative, and we closed the position. We wanted to see if we could attract. Now, we were still in the industry process, and I'm going to go through that here in a moment. So, uh, when we got that email, and that email was rocking me, I said, 20 main, what issue here is? Why would we not want to go out, hire the best teachers today? Why are we not in charge of hiring the best teachers today? Our name was to hire the best teachers, why are we not doing it? Scottsdale's system, I began to look at, because we've had some problems with it. Now, as an outsider coming into Scottsdale, it raised a lot of concerns. So I went to the government board and had executive discussion, executive session, was like, can't, but then we make spring break. And then this is the week after spring break, here we are. And we had a meeting this week with the F D A president, we had phone conversations, we said, hey, look, come to the government board and present. That was, that was a decision I made, because of the timeframe of spring break. Didn't have time for a meeting for a meeting, but hey, come and work your business. And, um, I thought it would be a break, but we'll have to define that speech. So what happened with the success initiative? Well, let me take this back in time for a little bit, because we had 56 students retired, two have resigned, um, unassigned 14 teachers, and we had 54 interviews, 20 had drafted novices in the interview process, but we hired 34 teachers. Pretty excited about that. Major people, not F T E. Well, what also is normal is that it's pretty normal in a high school to have three retirees. It's pretty normal in a high school to have two re- reservations. Um, that's the normal process. So, the abnormal process was the bottom half, the fact that everybody was unassigned, and we did go around the meeting and have one meeting, and we did say, every person who's unassigned will have a job in Scottsdale. And what's holding true to that? Every unassigned person in Scottsdale will have a job. Now, the rumor recently said that I'm going to remove other teachers to create jobs for the cornautic, and that's not true. That's a whole face plot, because they don't need to. There will be plenty of jobs, but as you will see, it's going to take time to get there. So here's the old thing at, um, cornautic right now, there are 26, 22 F T Es available. First, how many will be from a retirement? 37 math people are looking at that job, from outside the district, because we posted, but we can't hire them. We have a piece of this in the retirement. We have an instructor's brochure being installed during interview process with. We have five 26 English teachers. We have six math teachers. Why shouldn't we hire 12 math teachers in this district? Math is hard to fill. We have fragment of the vision. Now, this is a high school stat, which means that it also was activated by the fact that kids didn't sign up for some class. So some of those unassigned are unassigned because nobody signed up for a class that they offered, so they became what's called a circle. That happens during this time of year as well. In the initiative, we put out the jobs for the 14 people, we said, I don't, I'm unassigning my position and going to someone else's position. We spoke to those positions, and here's what happened. Accounting position for the retirement, 37 math students. We ought to be interviewing 37 math students applying to accounting. T P E, there's no computer science, 7 math students so far, that's going to be hard to fill. We ought to be interviewing 19 English teachers, 2 math people. I don't have a hard time filling that. Science, 12, social studies, 30. Special ed, 12, but I've had surplus of special ed, not as many as you. So what happened? Um, we, we have volunteer unassigned, we have involuntary unassigned. I was told with cornautic, unassigned is what I would call involuntary. So in other words, they didn't ask to be unassigned, they got in a model that caused them to be unassigned. Then there's the surplus. And high school, it's pretty close here, say, I, I have a, a class that I keep, but no one signed up for it, no one wants to take my computer science class, and all of a sudden, I get surplus that fragment of my class. I also have 74 teachers in the district at large, who notice that only, only 27 are in cornautic high school. There are 27 S U S D teachers at large who are actually unassigned. Got 64.6 F T E unassigned to 70 more people, so there's a fragment of jobs there. We have 74.3 vacant teachers in the district right now today. We guarantee you position in S U S D, but when you, when you become unassigned, you give up your contracted work station. Now comes a very complex hook, matching up certifications to openings. That's a little more complicated, because right now, over 45 of the reservations and retirements, we have 9 are unentry, 10 are K A, 4 are non-actual, 10 are high school, 12 are special ed. ed. So we don't have twenty six positions in high schools that automatically place cornado. So when you say, no hiring outside the district until every teacher in the district have a position, it raises a red flag. Now, historically, a hundred and ninety eight teachers were hired in nineteen twenty fifteen, sixteen. Twenty sixteen, seventeen, a hundred and eighty three teachers. There's a question mark for next year, how many we will hire. We know for sure, we have forty five, but there's a process at each place. The first opening occurred April thirteenth. Where do, where do these come from? There are first grade teachers, non-signed teachers. Opening being created by retirement, resignation, quote, from leveling, in other words, I have a large fourth grade class that moves into fifth grade, causing a need, causing a decrease in fourth grade, causing a surplus in one area and a growth in another area. Two fourths are another way that we have that in Stafford. That's from the thirteenth. That's the first set of open. There's another set of open. April nineteenth, if contracting goes according to the timeframe. We still have continued unsigned teachers, but we start placing teachers in jobs that we have. Well, we have some that are still unassigned, because we don't have a remat, but we might have more elementary openings and more secondary people needing a remat. We can see it's still being created by retirement, resignation, and non-signed contracts. That's the normal process in the district. Why is the nineteenth, Friday contract? If the government board approves the twenty seventeen, eighteen compensation package next year, if the board does that, if they were satisfied with meeting for process, it's a good incentive for compensation we're going to offer. And HR then immediately began in their process, assuming a couple of days to do that, they would then send out contracts that would be received in the twenty eighth. The law requires sixteen business days for a teacher to turn that contract back in. So we can't assume anything until the nineteenth. That's true to second opening of jobs. Then on those openings, we go back to the building of the principal, so for instance, if I'm a calculus teacher, but I have another teacher that might want to teach calculus, I might assign a calculus and open up an algebra class. So you're going to level into the curve. Or I might ask my fifth grade teacher, we'd like to take my fourth grade opening, and then I post a fifth grade class. So there's this process that happens internally during that time. Then you post externally on the twenty fourth, fifty, twenty eighth, if you want to give at least five days at the standard of the process. Which means that we would pay the screen and begin interviewing major students. And everybody knows, after June one, the very best teachers have lost. And remember, I said that our competition is already beginning to hire. They began hiring, seeing a very lucky student teacher speak, they grabbed him as a teacher. They began hiring by hitting those three markers. But hell, we hired first January and February, and we go through the process of job fair across the nation. And we knew what I call coaching. We called the very best teachers that we know of in this state, and we began to ask them to come and apply. You'll see teachers who do years, like our own Chris March, who on our own Facebook share, she's going to pay for it. Because other districts want the very same. The teacher of the year has been out speaking, they're going to recruit her. And lucky for K Street, they grabbed one of our guys. So we began to, but we don't post that position because I don't have a non-signed contract or a resignation. I won't know that till the nineteenth. I know it because of Facebook, but I really won't know until the paperwork comes through in the HR process. Then we began to hire. Well, what happened is we go back to all these people who applied at cornado, and now in May, I see if they're still available. But I am able, March and April, that they may have gotten a job somewhere else. So that candidate pool will riddle and riddle and riddle, and we won't know what we have. Now, we will continue to guarantee these seventy four teachers contracts and placements, but it takes time for the placement and the shuttling to occur, because all of these go to process of tax. So while we're going through these, I can turn a contract, my husband got a job in California, and I'm choosing to go, those openings allow the opening for the unassigned hopes to take positions. We don't bump or risk people who are under contract with us, supplying someone else a position. In the end, as we said in all those morning meetings, in the end, if they don't have a job, we'll still send in a pool of substitute at their record page. Now, we did that last year for FTE, at the time of school year started, every FTE person would place a job, and we didn't have a pool of substitute. But that gives us a full process, because there is a third time that we get openings in this whole summer. And we did every summer, unexpected resignation from law. I decided to stay home with my children, my husband has been transferred, I, I have to take care of my parents, I've got serious illness, and we have multiple openings that occur in the past. And every district in the state has that. And then we have growth and decline. So all of a sudden, Anna Socky Dunn, this year had a big second grade, and I had to go find a second grade teacher to get into the school, of which he'll do. But that happens in the growth and decline, we have unexpected April overcommitment, people choose to come back, people take the lead. So that's the third time. By the time all of that is done, you settle the dust and everybody has a job. But if there's any system in place that holds you up from hiring during that, you're not in the market, it's a maybe. You're not in that market for Arizona. You're sitting back believing that because we're Scottsdale, in June, people will fund us. In May, there will be a flood of teachers. But specifically, I don't believe that Arizona has the buffer of teachers. So I have some concerns with different tenants, as the media creators are thoughtful, $100 a year, that we have a system that's falling down. I appreciate that I've heard all from Julie and then from Ronnie, that they're willing to change that system. But how many meetings do we need to have to fix the problem, and how many weeks are we going to wait to hire before we get out there and interview those for the jobs that we have? And I'm going to tell you, teachers don't like it. When we handle a contract at a fair and say, boy, we'd like you to join instrument team, I can't tell you what school or what grade, but geez, thanks for joining us, you're a great elementary teacher. We make you go to Chandler, Chandler says, you've dreamed of being a third grade teacher, and we're getting you a third grade, and by the way, your third grade is going to be at this elementary school. And they look at that offer and they go, Scottsdale, Chandler, I'm going to Chandler. I know who I'm going to teach, I know the grade level I'm going to teach, and I know the principal I'm going to work with, because leadership doesn't matter. So we've created a system, in my opinion, that has caused us some of our own problems. So I'm going to ask you off the scene to talk about why we believe the DEA has some issues in it that is causing us some frustration. And again, I'm going to answer that, but she can't without. This came to my attention February twenty fourth from an email from Ronnie. I didn't realize the depth of the box of the meat Scottsdale, and it's inside. It's not cornado issues, it's a Scottsdale SUSD issue of getting the very best teachers working. So what's bothering you, Bob, when the DEA is there?
Okay, so I gave out a red line, taking a look at the faculty timeline, so I'm going to go through the faculty timeline, as well as the transfer language that we have. And the focus that we've worked on is really, oh, we make changes that are impacting timing in the process. How do we speed up the process? So you'll notice on the faculty timeline, the entire first page was through March, but that entire process has gone, no change to it. We have our rift, we don't believe we have a rift at all, that doesn't change. What really started to slow us up is we made posters. That we take the vacancies posting, and post them beginning tomorrow until May, always till May twenty fifth, they keep getting posted. So, and we can't do anything for the transfer process. So the, the transfer process goes until April seventh, so everything is halted until that transfer process and the first unassigned on April thirteenth. So those are the two timelines. So what I am recommending here, and cabinet is recommending, is that we go ahead and do the teacher transfer process. That we put out the sheet of where all the vacancies are, we've already sent to the teachers to start collecting their preferences for anyone who's unassigned, but we're not going to leave that transfer process open. That come March twentieth, that principals can actually start having conversations with internal and external candidates around what that was the plan. So our current employees are able to go ahead and contact principals, just like they've always done, they can have a conversation if they want to be considered for a transfer. We're just not going to leave it open for that long window, and then go to first assigned placement April thirteenth. So it's really just taking that time off, we'll do the transfer process, it's opening up come this Monday. Now, on the unassigned, because that process, you have to match up when you do the seventy four vacancies and the sixty four, we know that we don't have all the secondary openings that we need. Some are going to have to wait, it may be June, it may be May, it may be July, before those openings end up coming occurring. So on the first unassigned placement, what the recommendation is, that we are actually going to hold a meeting, and we have a date of next week to twenty seconds, so anything we decide on today, we'll make sure gets communicated out to teachers right away. So that we hold the meeting like we've always held a meeting, and we'll inform them of what the process is going to look like for anyone who's on that unassigned list. We collect the preference sheet, just like we've always collected the preference sheet. And that we will then start to match. I am recommending though, that it is the president of FDA, with myself, that we don't take the transfer committee, because they're classroom teachers, and because it takes more time to do, that Julie and I would be able to sit down and work the process. And this way, it's not one co-chair over the other co-chair doing it, we'll take both co-chairs out of this, and then the FDA president and myself will actually go on the process that we start immediately next week, placing those that are on the unassigned list instead of waiting till April thirteenth. So there's a few strike throughs that happened in that unassigned placement thing, and then I was just working with the president of FDA to make the placement. So it's not, there's minimal changes, taking a look at anything that we can do to speed up the hiring, get our own teachers, honoring our own teachers, so that when they actually get their contract, they know what their placement is already, that they're not waiting for me to be able to know their placement either. So we will begin that work next week.
So, you had an interesting question about this being double-timed by the department chairs, but the reality is, what we want to do is unsign our unsigned teachers as rapidly as possible. No, no, we can't unsign everybody until the whole shifting of people reciting with our own contract. And I'm asking the teachers, I'm going to make a decision about the contract, and I'm going to tell them what they're paid. And that's another issue. Because teachers want to know, am I getting a raise, am I getting my stuff, am I getting my education, and what's my contract date look like? Until that's decided, that process slows down the openings and it slows down the timing. So, so those issues are hanging out there too. But I gotta say, as soon as we can start assigning teachers, we don't sign them. As soon as we start interviewing outside campus, we start interviewing. And again, historically, we didn't have lots of jobs available. I don't, I don't believe that those twenty six teachers at cornado won't have a job. I consider to believe that we will have plenty of positions from then given the statistics of the last two years. I want to say one more time for the record. We are not risking any teachers at all. None. And we are not asking a teacher to vacate a spot so that a more seasoned teacher can substitute in their role. And that rumor has been out there, and that fear factor is not what we're doing. All we're asking to do is unsign our teachers as directly as possible. Well, I'm going to hire the very best teacher for our students as quickly as we can so that we can get that teaching done. And, and contrast, as quickly as we can, so our teachers are not hosed by the neighbors. And why can we not use this to the neighbors? That's a certain problem. The board has questions thus far about what Dr. Sidney said.
Board member, uh, board member Hartman?
Um, I'm, I, I will have comments towards the end.
Okay, all right.
And then, so, so making an argument, Scottsdale needs to make hiring the best of our teachers, that certification and way is not a necessity. That's, that's our, our goal, to do. Department chairs. First of all, department chairs in our case. Department chairs were a system that was put in place when there were large budgets of which to administer and technical check in and out, and sometimes some districts actually use department chairs to hold teachers accountable and to visit classrooms and do evaluation. But today, most districts have moved to make it called instructional leadership teams. It's groups of teachers who are leaders of the campus, to help lead professional development, to support new teachers, to either master teachers, to model classrooms, and as you look at initiatives, that leadership is an extension of the leadership of the visionary of the campus, and the head leadership on the campus is the principal. The principal is the lead instructional teacher of the campus. And those are the teachers that we want to hire, principals who are teaching. And what we want them to do is pick their team. Now, I heard our, our friends saying, well, the principals don't have good judges. They'll pick the people they like. The principals might pick people that they like. And I think that's something that's kind of in our mind. So maybe I missed turn two, but the reality is, we hire a principal to lead a campus. We hire them as the visionary of the campus, as the HR from leading the campus. And they should put together and assemble a team to lead teachers. And it shouldn't be the same person ten years in a row. It ought to change up a little bit, and we ought to grow teachers. We ought to give teachers opportunities to serve in leadership. But we should move to a system that's loaded on by the department. I, I haven't seen a system like that in years where the team, the person, the person, the leader. But the leadership team turns all the teachers in the school onto the guidance of the principal, working together to move instructions forward. So as we look forward to the future, I would issue you the principal, the leader of the campus, to pick their team, and we don't have the CEO coming in saying, I'm not going to pick the team that's going to move this organization forward in order to be profitable. Instead, I'm going to just let the consumer send me somebody to lead my team. And I can imagine using that kind of concept, the consumer supports, it's taken with support and the value. But the reality is, the person who's responsible in the day, the person I'm going to hold accountable, the person I'm going to fire if the campus doesn't make progress, is the principal. Well, I should give the principal every tool of flexibility to get successful in their culture. And I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that if they don't pick the leadership team from that campus to help them lead. Because today, you cannot lead in isolation. Instructional leaders must rely on teacher leadership in order to move this school forward to the best for our students, to provide the professional development. That instructional leadership team helps that principal determine the PD that that campus needs. Department chairs traditionally have been checking in the book, checking out the book, overseeing the budget, helping with the orders. The system has to manage everything. One of the areas, our area is about instruction, about leadership. And we often read of research about teacher leaders. This is an opportunity for teacher leaders. Some campuses, you might have two great teacher leaders in the same department, so they're going to serve on that instructional leadership team. It may not be that I have one for math, and one for science, and one for English, and one for文科. I might have two outstanding teachers in the English department that needs the instructional leaders for our whole campus. So it's not tied to departmentalization like it used to be. So as we go forward, if we have something in our DEA that prevents our principals from being that great instructional leader, and then deholding them accountable for expectations of instructional leadership, I think we ought to consider whether or not it belongs to them. Um, being that two of the things that we department process, it may warrant us going next year. We want to spend more time in me to go through all of the language, of like, what we say, decades and decades of work from administrators to teachers, over the decades and decades. Well, the hundred and fifty year old model, that's a long time too, but I don't think the hundred and fifty year old model of instruction has did the progress of today. So we should always look at our systems to see if they're working for today's market. Today's market is not to wait for May to hire a teacher. Today's market, we should consider whether or not even department chair is active or not. And then we can say this last thing, we talk about high school. In my vision, I'd like to see us create a system that allows for agendas for the elementary and the middle level, and the high school to have instructional leadership and teacher leaders on all of campuses. And they don't have that today. We ought to make pay the high school people. But I think we ought to breed in middle school teachers as instructional leaders and elementary folks, and pay them all to be instructional leaders and give them an opportunity to teach leadership. So as we take this apart, we're also talking about rebuilding it to attach every campus to teach leadership. I mean, so, that's, that's what I'm not, we're not in, and we, we're not trying to lose teachers, we're trying to attract and retain. But we need to do it more rapidly if we're going to compete. What we need to do is more rapidly, if we're going to compete with Chandler, and Mesa, and Curtis Valley, and Deer Valley, and Peoria, and Pace Creek, we're taking up the teachers.
Is there any questions for us? Board member Kirby?
Thank you, Dr. Birdwell. The word that, on the department chairs, that Ronnie used was handpick, department chairs. And I heard you say through your presentation multiple times, pick. So is there an interview process that teachers who are interested in being this instructional leader will be able to put in for? And put their name in the hat to be considered? Or is it a pick?
No, I think what we need to do is let the, get the principals together and talk about what, and I don't want to do it with them, so I'm happy to do it with them, but to get together and say, here's an instructional leadership teacher leadership looks like, so that the person applying for it understands what it is. Because it's not about counting books and taking in budgets and overseeing that. Because if we talk about explaining this to the elementary, the middle, and the high school, we want to clearly define what an instructional leader does. That you know that you're going to coach new teachers, that you're going to allow people to come into your classroom and see you as a master teacher, that you're going to help drive the professional development on the campus. So putting together that description for our staff and working with our teachers on that description is really important. And then allowing the principal to call in people who are interested, and take them through an interview process, and talk about what's core of it on that description, and why they feel they're ready to do that. I think it's critical to have that. So yeah, we need a description of it, and then we need an opportunity to come in and interview with the principal, and then the decisions are made.
Thank you. Board member Becca?
I'm going to stick with the department chair for just a minute. Really does the principal actually make decisions in annual decisions? And is it in June?
Yeah, my experience, I'm not going to talk for Scottsdale, and maybe we have a high school principal here that can talk to us, and maybe Mitch can talk to us. But my experience is then, that it is an annual process during staffing, after I've finished my staffing process, and I know who I have on staff, then in May, or sometimes if there's been a large turnover, after they come back, there's a process that you go through. But you usually like to determine it in May, so that they know coming into the next fiscal year that they're going to be a part of that, because there are agendas assigned, and the teachers want to know if that's going to be an agenda. And there are individuals who choose not to do it because they coach, and there are other expectations that they have, and they don't have the time to dedicate to it. Because it is another meeting, and it's typically going to be a biweekly meeting. It requires them to do and lead professional development, so yeah, there's some time to it. What can I ask?
Mitch? What has been the question?
The high school principals, it should be done continually under the TDA. There's options in how that department chair can be chosen, in terms of principals that employ the senior department, or the department that employs the principal, and then the department chairs.
So is it the principal to choose, I believe it's three options, the principal chooses which option?
Basically, it's the department, it's how that is.
And then typically in, in the year, or oh, before the action of their whole staff? You know, they're staffing in April, right?
So for clarity, do they meet with all departments at the high school to make the determination by department, and each?
They just meet with each individual department.
So fourteen, fourteen to fifteen meetings, fourteen to eighteen different departments?
Well, with these, these are the academic areas, I don't know if it's that number, but we have.
Do they tonight, department heads per camp?
Department heads.
Okay. All right, and it's done starting in April before the action of who all your teachers are going to be. Because I've learned that we do not have contracts up to everybody until in May. So that's surprising. So they have to check before they know. This is going to be working with them.
Yeah, the first department that's in place.
Okay, so I'm having a little difficulty. Everybody has a contract, and their contract is good through, through the last day of school in May, right? July and June, technically. So you could be meeting with, you could be meeting with the existing department, but it may not be the department's here. Is that possible, then? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, I'm assuming, and I want Dr. Birdwell to point it out. And typically, you have a couple of reputations, a few retirements, because you don't have as large of people on campus. So for the most part, that's the way that the department remains in place. But yeah, there will be some turnover within that.
Okay, thanks. So another question then, from Cam. You gave us what you wanted to do with the TDA for the transfer. Do you want the same thing for the department chairs? Which department chair, that is taking away the language. Right now, yes, because the three processes in there, department nominates candidates, two or three principals collect, the principal nominates two or three candidates, the department collects, or anyone who's on the qualified department collects. So there is a piece in there that does not hook us in the control of what the leader on the campus is, so that we don't need to spend any retirement. So you suspend the language here, but then you're going to pick someone who is somewhere else so that the principals will be able to pick department chairs by? Is that following you?
I, I was Dr. Birdwell, there's going to be a conversation around if you can call this department chair. It might not be that, you've heard that, it might be two non-teachers that are credible and are on the leadership team. So it may be that it's a design of looking at, energy, salary, the high school principal, looking at that leadership team you're building, not the department chair.
So you're really looking at two very different things when we look at the department chairs and we look at transfers.
Oh, yeah, they're two different things.
So we are going to be voting on them separately? Then to test it that?
Yeah, you could make them two separate.
That would be important, that we do that then. What I also heard is that this is a annual agreement, right? The TDA, and if every year, come together, and you, the board approves this agreement for the following year. Is that a correct statement? So is this agreement that's stopped May thirtieth, every year, or June one? Or when is that agreement up?
It may be the end of June. Can you start the brand new July last, so June every year?
So Michelle, when the contract, the contract by definition is an agreement between an employee and the governing board. And the contract goes July one through June thirtieth. So the agreement parallels that as an extension of the contract.
Right, there's some that's again. Your contract, and you have the TDA agreement. So, I mean, this is a practice. You're looking at changing language in there, which would be temporary, and the suspension would be temporary to through June thirtieth of two thousand seventeen.
With a rewrite?
The rewrite, if you do anyway, because you do that every year, it would be thought that these are two areas that need to be rewritten. Right?
Which we would ask them to include in instructional leadership, elementary and middle school, opportunities for teacher leaders versus just secondary.
And there could be other things in the transfer, and it would be, when you also live in a new environment that we're in. One of the questions that came up from reading what the teachers asked, is I understand when this, I think the term suspension was used in both instances, how long that would be for? So there is an answer out there. Because the term of this particular contract, of that contract, is either rewritten, or re, or approved by the board every year. It comes back to the board in next year.
So we would never want to act in opposition of the TDA. But once the board has approved one, we want to follow up to the benefit of our ability. We have a market of hiring that has caused a huge constraint in the educational field. To get out and get on the market, the only way to do that without breaking an agreement is to suspend the agreement. And then take the time to rewrite it in a corporate manner going forward with the new market in mind. So you're exactly right. This is only taking us through June thirtieth. Now, meet confer is a body that's in place that would continue to address these issues and come back with language, better to address this as we go forward. And then we would go through that piece. There will be other pieces in the meet confer process that we will bring forward as well at that time for next year's agreement. But what we're trying to do is simply hire more teachers in a more rapid method, and create a broader teacher leadership opportunity in our district that's through a process of selection, by the principal through an interview.
So, yeah. So I would like to address something that was brought up by Ronnie. Is that, because it is temporary, I would hope that it, what is being requested or proposed is temporary, that that message, that you keep saying that you're giving them the teachers that aren't valued, I'm having difficulty with that. So I don't see this as a philosophical difference in not valuing your teachers by changing some of the language in this agreement. Because this agreement, you have to give, and that's, because it's exactly the same you every year, because there's that opportunity to make changes as education changes, as the environment changes, and competitiveness of the school, school team. And I would think that would, that the FBA would, and we have to do that way, and I teach teachers. So I hope, at least for me, that you are not feeling not valued by changes that you made there. Board member Kirby?
Okay, thank you. So I have a technical procedural question for, on the transfer language, you gave us essentially a redlined version. If that, are you, are you, if staff recommending that we approve the redlined version as opposed to, and when I hear suspend, I think just redline the whole thing, as opposed to what's been given to us, which is redlining portions of it. And all the chance for that first, and I may have to follow up in this depending area.
That question for her. It is an option for the board. I wanted to give you that option to say you can either suspend the language that's in there, and then know that we're still going to honor, this is the process we're going to do. And I don't know if Michelle Marshall has a preference in that, but it makes a difference on, from that standpoint. But I wanted you to clearly understand that if we're suspending the language, what does that really mean? Here's what's going to impact within our timeline.
Practically.
Yes.
Okay, so my follow-up question then, is if we choose to just approve the redline and not the full suspension of it, are we, are we confident that the TDA document as a whole will flow, work with us just redlining a piece here, and a piece there, and a piece there, as opposed to just, let's just suspend the whole thing?
So, this is a little piece, I think, that Michelle has brought in on the agenda, the recommendation.
Not sure how I made it clear, but I'll answer and then set it out where you are when you have any. Board member Kirby, great question. When I was asked about this, I looked at what is, what is the best way to accomplish what an instructional leadership team, TDA, to free up the ability to hire teachers in the most efficient way and in the best interest of the team. So my initial recommendation was to suspend the entire section, so that we did not inadvertently miss something in the detail. We discussed later redlining as a backup solution towards having discussions, like, we all know whole hog, we want to be a little bit more narrow in doing that. But my recommendation to allow the administration the most flexibility to do what they've also used since the entire thing.
If I might add a piece to that. The reason that, a redline, if I can be for bold to say, one of my discoveries with Scottsdale, is that there seems to be a huge culture of distrust, one of which that I have, I have been shocked with. But if we suspend the whole thing, it appears that the teachers distrust that we're going to place the unassigned. And I'm concerned about that. Because we are going to place them, we're going to follow as much of this as we can. What we want to do is get out on the market and try to get some people to come to Scottsdale. But I don't believe that they're trusting on that. I don't believe that there's a good enough culture of trust that if I said, we're going to place every unassigned teacher between now and June, they don't trust me. I come into a culture that automatically distrust the superintendent. And I'm saddened by that, but it is a reality. So to make sure that the language doesn't conflict in other places, if you suspend the whole piece, we move forward and hopefully, because we walk our path, they'll learn that when we say we're going to do something, we do it, and we build that basically go forward. If we just do the redline, does it soften the piece to say, we are honoring pieces of this, we're just trying to get out and hire? So we try to do a softer, to try to deal with that culture of distrust. It wasn't a matter whether one was better than the other, it was, we live in a culture of distrust in Scottsdale, and trying to address it the best I can and say, we need to hire the teachers. I don't, I'm not going to break this, and we're not going to break contract, and we're going to place unassigned teachers, and we're going to use the processes that exist to do that. We just don't want to, we don't want to miss the outside candidates at the same time. And the best, so what's the best option there? There isn't a good option for the superintendent. Either way, there's been rumors out in the teachers field of distrust. Well, I inherited that. I'm sorry that it exists. But the reality is, we want to try to find a compromise to honor. So the redline was a compromise to honor, I don't know that it's going to solve the distrust, I think they're still going to distrust me. It just is the nature of Scottsdale.
If I may, I'm willing to talk with Dr. Sittin. The other thing that you can do, if you decide to do that, is suspend both sections. And with the understanding that the administration will follow the process that's been described by Dr. Earl and Dr. Sittin. And I believe part of what Dr. Sittin's document included something that you could, if you could, if I'm not mistaken.
The second timeline is modified.
So you could specifically about that timeline, if that helps, if you could.
Yeah, I do want to share that I did not go through the entire TDA. There are references in other places. It's a six-book, as Ronnie showed us, and lots of pages. So I have not covered the entire thing beyond really working on the transfer section.
Board member Kirby? So, that's important to know, because that's a very good heads up, thank you. But we, this, these documents are now public documents. So if we chose to suspend the entire section, these documents can be given to the public so they know what the intent is. Right?
Correct. Board member Kirby?
I'll try and be diplomatic and not be. I don't think any of this should be interpreted as, you may feel it's a surprise to me, but I can assure you, I couldn't do your job. I would have to have a role of duck taking the suspended names down, especially in the end of the conference, I would think. I have a lot of expertise in student, and all of the students, and a lot of expertise as well. And I know a lot of parents do as well. I would like to, thank you all for your presentation, thank you, Dr. Birdwell. I would like to comment on department chairs, and just to see that come through parents and professors. When a parent hears department chair, they're thinking academic leader, they're thinking somebody that this parent has a question or concern, they can go to that department chair and discuss it. I spoke with several parents, several little schools, low-end dependent, uh, companions that it was brought, or whatever it is, they, but their parents that spoke with department chairs several years ago, they're still waiting for a response. And that's not right. I, Ronnie, from your, I know it's everywhere, from your presentation, it seems like there's concern about favoritism, in terms of who the principal picks that are going to pick their friends. I almost feel like we have that now, because we-
I almost feel like we have that now, because we have department chairs year in and year out. Some are great, some, some, maybe not so good. I, I don't know, I can't speak for everyone in the district, but I think there needs to be some sort of change, and we are entrusting our principals to be academic leaders, and I liked your comments, and Dr. Bergwold, about a leadership team. There's frustration there that, you know, I'll try and wrap it up, that when you say department chair, actually, I think going to, you know, maybe it's a semantic change in titles, I hope it's more than that, that it really is a leadership team, and that hopefully it will be an opportunity for all teachers, perhaps teachers that want to be department chairs, and, and they are, because year in and year out, it's the same department chair. I, I don't know, this is just some frustration that I'm feeling within the community, and I, I thought it was important to hear.
Pardon, number Hartman, did you have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, hopefully.
Okay. Okay. I have actually two questions on the contract timeline, and then one question on the department chair topic. With respect to the contract timeline, the first question is, assuming that we make, have a vote on our board meeting next week, which is the 21st or 22nd, and then the district is in a position to actually put the contracts out to the teachers, I think we're assuming that those go out on the 28th, and I'm wondering if there's any possibility of even moving that up by a couple days, you know, just to buy a few more days on the backend, or if that, if that, you know, as quick as we can possibly do it?
Thank you for asking that question. There are 1,500 contracts to write and adjust. If the package goes forward with any increase in salary, each contract must be rewritten. And so there is a process, it takes a couple days in HR, and although they're willing to work the weekend, it gets pushing into habit electronically in teachers' hands by the 28th.
Okay, I appreciate that. So then, thank you, instead it's a thank you for being as accelerated as possible in this process. My second question on the contract timeline is, of the still open Coronado positions, I believe, is there another opportunity for in-district teachers to apply? I know that we've opened it up to everybody very early in the process, but is there still yet one more opportunity?
There are 34 teachers inside SUSB that have been accepted into the model, who interviewed and are very excited, and we're excited to have them as a part of it. Any teacher going forward, once those positions are posted, are still welcome to apply, and we're hoping that some SUSB staff reconsider and put in an application. The, the only teachers that are not going to be considered and interviewed are those who have already chose to leave Coronado, and who have already been interviewed and told that they were not a fit.
Okay, thank you.
They would not be interviewed a second time.
Okay, and that makes sense. And that's terrific, because there's a lot of terrific teachers out in the district, and certainly we're, I would love to see those teachers apply for those positions with, you know, the appropriate will and skill, so I'm glad to hear that there's that second opportunity. Last, my question on the department chair. First a comment, and then a question. I wholeheartedly agree that a leader needs to be not only responsible but accountable for their leadership team. I have never seen a successful organization where a committee decision recommends the direct reports to the leader. That, that just, you cannot hold someone responsible and accountable if they really don't have the responsibility for hiring their leadership team. Ultimately, they're accountable, but, you know, the department chairs do need to perform, but it's, it's that leader's both responsibility and accountability. So I, I understand that that's been in our TEA, maybe a process for a long time, but I do not see that as a, an equation for success in a high-performing organization. Now, there's absolutely opportunity to provide recommendations and for everyone to apply and, you know, to get feedback from others, but I would hope that outstanding department heads that are there will continue to be the outstanding department heads, and we need to give the leaders that authority. Now, having said that, I do have a question. We talked about, and I really appreciate, Dr. Bergwold, your comments on really, you know, a department chair is an instructional leader, it's not an operational person. There may be some operational responsibilities, but it is an instructional leader. And so we often talk about will and skill, and so is there, so we'll have a description of what that skill needs to look like. If somebody's on their way, they have the will, and they're on the way to developing that skill, is this a developmental opportunity for someone to grow into it if they've showed the potential? And is that something that we can support, or do you have to already have had that, you know, demonstrative experience of an instructional leader?
Thank you for asking that. And yes, I do think that this is a, a learning opportunity for teachers. I mean, everything that we need to talk, read, we talk about teacher leaders, and the opportunity to grow and learn as a leader, and not, not all teachers have had that opportunity. So we would not exclude somebody because they haven't served as a department chair, or they haven't served on a committee. It goes back to will, skill, and, and that desire to learn and grow as a leader. So I think you'd have both of those. I think on that team, I would envision a mixture of brand-new leaders, teacher leaders, and some teacher leaders who are the master teachers to help others learn. I think it's a very powerful opportunity for all the schools.
Yeah. Thank you for that response, and I, I hope our teachers actually see that as the incredible opportunity, professional growth opportunity, that it can be, and that we're prepared to invest in those teachers and see it as a growth opportunity. So I, I think it's about building a high-performance pipeline, you know, that benefits our students at the end of the day, as well as our teachers. So thank you for that. And those are my, those are all my questions, so thank you very much. I realize that this is, you know, change, it's back to change, right? When we want to do things differently that have always been done one way, it feels uncomfortable. But at the same time, I've only seen demonstrated delivery and every single promise that our superintendent and the superintendent's leadership team have consistently delivered on what they promised. And so unfortunately, inheriting, you know, a distrustful environment, hopefully we're going to move through that process and deliver on promises. And it might feel uncomfortable, but the end, when we do the right thing, and I hope we build that trust along the way. I know I as a board member, am accruing that trust on a regular basis, and we have great teachers, and I support them as well, and I hope they can, you know, continue to incrementally buy into that trust too. So thank you for really this very transparent process, I appreciate it, thank you.
I know, yeah. I, well, I, I will. I, I'll first ask one of my questions, and next a few statements, and then we will have Roni and Sally back up to next few more statements, I think, or possibly take additional questions from our board. So I will, my, one of my first questions is, and board member Hartman brought up a good point, we, we do have in place department chairs that, and they're all different. From what I have heard, the feedbacks I've gotten, they're all very different in the duties they take on, the responsibilities they, they accept, or, or just choose kind of not, not to take on. But from an operational standpoint, what is it currently that they have set aside specifically for that stipend or that addendum that, are we saying those, if those, if there are those specific items, are they staying with that as well, and then getting additional, or are we really talking about a very different position?
So we're finding a different model, because you want to move in elementary and middle, and they don't have it at all. But right now, they get funded, one hundred dollars per person in the department.
Five hundred dollars per person.
Five hundred dollars per person on their team, so.
So we would look at designing a set amount, you were taking it to a leadership role, and Dr. Bergwold, working with, you know, what that might look like.
So, so for instance, at Coronado, we said there are six English teachers. So the, if you have the traditional department chair for that department, that person would then receive three thousand dollars. So it's not the same department to department, everybody has a different dollar. So we would look for a consistency that would be an addendum, that it didn't matter if you're in elementary or middle or a high school, if you served on the instructional leadership team, you would be paid the same addendum.
And are there specific operational past jobs that have been assigned to department chairs?
That would be through the conversation with the teachers and the principals, but we will take a look at those pieces.
Because it differs, obviously, from each department chair. Okay, that's, that's one of my comments, or questions, thank you. This, this is incredibly difficult decision, obviously. I think those of us who have been on the board for a very long time, and were in a very different culture in the past, do not take this decision lightly, because we know what it means, we know what a shift it is. But the reality is, for the last eight, nine months, we've been talking about this shift in our district, this palpable shift, this positive shift, that this board, our community, our staff, our teachers, our principals, our, our parents have been incredibly excited about. And I have always looked at this shift as, one, absolutely necessary because of where we were in the past, absolutely demanded by our community and our stakeholders, including our teachers, including our principals, and, and parents, and students even, that this shift was necessary. And from day one, it has been about honestly looking in our district, about, with, looking at the roadblocks that our dysfunction and distrust and lack of accountable leadership put up in front of us when it came to serving our students' needs to the best of our ability. That is, for four years as a board member, what I have talked about with every stakeholder, from parents to teachers, principals, about those roadblocks that have been placed in front of us for decades, as was stated earlier, for over the decades, over different times, different leaders, different situations, fear, and, and obviously economic issues that no one ever saw coming. Never mind the incredibly new competitive market that we are currently in, that, and those are external, besides the budget, but those are also external roadblocks that have been put in front of us that we have to deal with. And this board, for the first time in my four years plus of being on our members, has accepted those roadblocks. We have administration that is ready to take them down for us as a community. And it is a little hard for me to process the idea that this TEA is really somehow magically different than all the other dysfunctional conversations, the dysfunctional decision-making that was in our district, that was born of that lack of accountable leadership that we've had for at least a good decade. All of you that I've spoken with, we know that this didn't just happen, it's just not new. So this TEA was born of that, just like our current, our past recent culture was. It is inconceivable to me that we would not also address this and reexamine it, and look at the roadblocks that it has in place, just like we've been doing with our administration, with our sites, with our culture of leadership that has been very weak. So I don't, I too do not look at it as a slap in the face to teachers. I look at it as this board continuing the work that we have been dedicated to ever since we've, our new leadership has come on board and driven a shift in our district that was much needed. So I hope you can take that all to heart. I hope that, at least for some of us, you know we've earned our stripes, that we listen to teachers, and that we do believe in teacher leadership, we do believe in site leadership. That message wasn't hidden very well over these last, for years, for many years for some of us. So I, I hope you all remember that, as we move forward, and somehow we all move forward, taking these roadblocks down with trust in each other. I really hope we can, so. Just want to thank you all for being here, thank you all for your presentations, and Roni, I haven't forgotten about you, you are next.
Very good to, hard to really get worked with that, that, so a few things that I've done, saying to your question, how do we make people feel compound, that we have kind of a process of frustration, and if you have a process that has, coming to person in the long years, so has current person, not once has anything come up that you have an issue. Something is to be punched, and we talk about, because it didn't happen a lot. So what happened is, forty-eight hours ago, this, this, there's a redline, timeline being that, I haven't seen, I don't think none of the, I think that's not, so we're still in the same bubble of teachers are not excluded, and the, and the answer is, well, we just come up with a, we came up with a, but we're, the making people drop, not necessarily for that thing. So dysfunction is a pressure layer. So dysfunction to me is rolling things out, and a few mentioned here, are changes that have been happening for it. I don't know how many teachers I have talked to that are now fired up about these new changes that are almost getting shut down, they're so quick, like, I don't even know how to come up with a big, that's, that's how bad things are happening. Maybe that's the potential of the business, that's on the footside of that business, is no one, that is, the teachers that are sitting here that work all day and all night for students, have been approached as, what do you think about this, inside this, you guys are going to be part of this, and we'll be, they're going to be part of planning this project, but the design of the model, we don't really want to be part, that means the function. Things that mean that's a pressure to me are things like, we have, we have a way of how do you think we transfer, and we concur in other committees. And even if the, the language is archaic, what a quote, then we amend that through the process. Distrust to me is, someone is not happy with a piece of language that we agreed to, and what ends up happening is, it goes to the board that says, hey, we're going to have to take that off. And by the way, next week, if I'm not happy with the page structure, we're going to come and have to remove that off. And next week, if I'm not happy with cross periods, we're going to have to take that off. So yeah, that is where that distrust comes from. It's not just the past, apparently how things are being done now. You can't just say that that's not going to be a reason in two weeks, four, two months, that is really good for what we need, but on the footside, that's not on the teachers'. It's not a matter of not wanting change, so, I don't, I don't think that's fair to say sometimes. I think it's a matter of wanting change to happen in a way that's thoughtful, and meaningful, and timely, all three of those things that you can't can happen, but now it seems that either change is timely, but not thoughtful, or change is thoughtful, but it takes three years to get something done. There's, there's got to be a middle somewhere, and the last two actions that we did here have not shown. So we come to this function and distrust, you have your perspective, you have the right to have that, one hundred percent, but I'm letting you know that it's quite different with the teachers, it's just that this is functional, and there's distrust, and this is not their health.
I have to ask you a question.
Yes.
Because you said that we're affecting teachers' lives. We've not ripped anybody, we're not, we're not offering contracts, what we're doing is moving forward the placement of teachers that have been unassigned, and letting them know sooner, and then interviewing outside candidates sooner, and you're saying I'm affecting their lives in a negative manner, and I can't figure that out, because the teachers are getting the jobs they're asking for sooner. But they're not being denied a contract or a job, it's just being moved forward in a faster process so that we can get out on the market. How is that negatively affecting our teachers? I'm, I'm missing.
No, two things, no, no, I thank you for asking that. So two things, one, when So two things, one, when we rely on a process, I walk into my classroom and I go, okay, this is how it's going to go, this is how things are going to work. It is affecting my life when there's a right or a timeline that I'm expecting, I guess throughout the week. So for example, I've been a teacher that runs, that does, I love that around so much, I'm extremely close to working. So if there's a vacancy or, yeah, I would love to fly for it. Moving the timeline up to your end today does not afford them that right, because they no longer could apply for a vacancy that they are still currently in. So that impacts life that way. The second thing is, you're right, this is a great conversation you and I are having about, why are we having to afford to be clear about the vote? Now I guess it's a bigger conversation.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Did any?
Chris, I knew.
Oh, I was going to ask if any board members wanted a question as well.
Okay. Chris is one of the people that she was not opposed to, she actually thought of the job.
Oh, congratulations.
And if you have any questions, you can do it up.
My, my apologies for the record, Chris, just congratulations. Congratulations.
Maybe we should, if I summarize, let's maybe start with the department chairs. We want to go ahead and have a separate motion if all discussion is done, that maybe we'll summarize, a possible motion for the department chair. Everyone comfortable with that?
Yep, in summary, what we're asking you is to stem the language regarding department chairs, that, that's the end of the act.
That's it. So, you ready for a motion? Go ahead.
So I move to suspend the language with respect to department chairs and the TEA.
Thank you, Board Member Kirby, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Sure.
In the 2016-17.
Oh, in the 2016-17 TEA, thank you. That, that is not for the 17, it's not for the 17-18 school year?
It's the TEA.
It's the TEA that we're functioning now, hiring under, that makes sense, sorry, I apologize. Yes, that makes sense. The current TEA, understood, yes. Do I have a second? I will second the motion. All, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'm sorry.
The, oh, we're not trying to, this is department chair?
Yes, the, the department chair motion, yes, this is sent, aye. All right, motion passes four to one, thank you. All right, now we are on, and let's look, do a series summary of possible motion. Are we going to discuss motion regarding the red line version or a full system?
We would, we would recommend that you suspend and adopt the staffing timeline that Dr. Sitten has given, that we will continue to follow the transfer process with the red line decision.
Of course, yes, if you would like. Um, Dr. Burwell, you asked Rony a question about how negative would impact the teachers. Explain this response, so I can understand how.
It was tampered with.
Yeah, I don't get it, yes.
Yeah, the first part, you would still be able to transfer. We're going to open it up March 20th, we're not going to hold all this until April 7th, and we're not going to wait until April 13th to play. But anyone can contact the principal just in March 20th, if they want to use their permission. And the teachers, the principal can go ahead and detain them, or they can go ahead and interview them. Both of those things are still going to retain the exact same. So the desert mountain teacher, want to go archaic, no, they, they can contact the principal, and they can still do that transfer process. We're just not going to leave it open all that long and not be able to look outside until that April 13th timeline. So you can still apply and transfer.
Okay. Board Member Kirby?
Um, so thank you for that response, more, or as important, I thought there's an echo. As, as importantly, how are we, how is staff going to communicate to the teachers of, for example, the timeline change that you just responded to when we were Beckham with?
We will put out the new timeline tomorrow to all teachers, and then we will also beam out individually anyone's assignment, because they're already, we have a group on the unassignments already that's getting emails, they give us your grant sheet, so we will contact them and let them know the exact timeline. We'll notify them that the meeting is next Wednesday, as it's scheduled, and we'll get all the information to unassign tomorrow also.
And if I may, I, I'd like to add a perspective that, I mean, I am a very big believer in, as teachers, being education professionals. And so from that lens, as I hear about other teachers already have contracts in other districts, as professionals, I just can't help feeling like that is a moment where you, you take a look at that, your profession, and, and what is best for it, and say, okay, it is, it is in that best interest of my site, my, my district, and myself as an education professional, to figure out as fast as I can where I am, where I'll be, where I can't be, and those types of things. So I, I'm definitely looking at it through that lens, and I hope any fears that may be out there, that this is just going to be some kind of tool used to punish teachers somehow, I hope this discussion has eased some of those fears at least. So do I have a motion?
I will move to accept the red line transfer language for the 15-17.
So, just to clarify?
Yes.
Yes, Board Member Kirby?
So your motion, just so that I can see what your motion is, you are choosing to accept the red line version versus suspension of the language.
Okay, suspension of the language. Well, you just, I think you described something a little differently than your motion. Let's be clear there. Yes.
So there is the timeline red line, and there is the 18-page TEA red line. And so this, this is expediting the transfer process that we just talked about. This is.
That is what that looks like in the transfer section, but I want to be clear, I did not go through the entire TEA to give any reference back to the transfer. So I took the timeline, redlined it, I went into the transfer section, the actual language in the TEA is that second pass you passed, and did a red line within that transfer. But there could be some cross-sections, which is why I shall make the point.
So if, if what you were trying to do was make some verbal recommendations, a review for recognition was, then the transfer section of the 2015-17 TEA and adopt the new staffing timeline, if that's what your plan is, then okay, putting work in progress. Yes, that is.
So what's so, make a motion, say what you think.
I don't know.
I know, it's all right.
So.
Didn't really do what we were doing.
Okay, I, so motion.
I, so motion, okay, I so moved.
Yes, I agree.
I so moved.
I'm not sure, I heard the motion, I'm sorry.
Okay, say it again, say it again for, for Board Member Hartman, very loud, very loudly.
Board Member Hartman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I was trying to capture the recommendation of Dr. Burwell, and I think I did. The motion would be to suspend the section of the 2016-17 TEA entitled "Transfer" and adopt the recommended staffing timeline that was presented by Dr. Sitten today to the board.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure, all right. And Board Member Beckham has made that motion, has moved, made that motion, do I have a second? I'll second it. Thank you, Board Member Kirby, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes five zero. All right. Thank you all for being here. Two-minute conversation. Yes, I would like to call for a two-minute break before moving on to item 8A. We are going to be in the meeting here and move on to item 8A. Sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I always, I always forget to. I know, I'm so sorry. I forget we're recorded all the time, that's probably a good thing. Are you good? All right, we're going to move on to the information discussion, item 8A, review of employee surveys. Dr. Sitten?
Yes, it's me. Thank you. Do you have anything in front of you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I'd like to just comment for the record that Board Member Hartman has left the meeting, and it's not there, but we still do have a court, so, there you go.
So you have a draft, and there's two type of surveys we do. We do an employee survey, but because it's very different when you work in a department, when you work at a site, we break it into two. So the top one you have, like a packet, is the employee survey that we would send to all schools. And what we did is here, cabinet worked through questions, and then aligned it to our core values. We wanted to make sure we were asking questions to give our core values, and we said a good majority of them are student-focused, accountable. And then on the column, I put, you have data from last year, that was either responded from people that strongly agree, agree with that data from last year. So obviously, new, as you added some core values, and so you'll see new written down there for if it is brand new. You have that, behind that, you actually have, what does it look like in format? So what are the actual choices to the questions? Some of them have an NA that doesn't apply, you actually have what school survey looks like. Behind that, and this was just done, you did not, you did not get this sent earlier, I think you had the survey sent earlier. So the third page in your packet is the department survey. And so we ask, we ask as departments what they're thinking. So one says on top, elementary, middle, high, the other one says department. And so some of the questions changed a little bit, we can interchange the word department in them versus school, and the same thing, they look at the core values that you, how which one addresses, and we gave you data for last year, and where maybe we put in a new question. And then behind, the very last one is, what did that actually look like in format, if we're going to send to the department, and what it actually was like. So cabinet just wanted to bring very important feedback from employees, really important that we're focusing on what the core values are, and making sure we're getting feedback on those core values to help us all improve. So here's what we can share with you, what we're looking at rolling out in April as our employee survey, and get your thoughts.
All right. None? Okay, and Board Member Beckham?
And I will warn you, I do lots of surveys. I usually write them all, because I look at them and go, why in the world would they ask me that question? Is that going to be the response to that data-driven paper? And what you need to respond to, except for maybe one or two, let's find out what happens. So I, please share with me, and nothing to do with you or what you do, okay? So my first question, is this an in-house survey or is this a prescription for this?
In-house.
In-house. And what you do in relation, other than show the data, is just want to ensure it's a voice in your head?
So every year, I look back and break it out by school, and all of it is there in the school or department, so they get their own results, take a look. So I would pack them on so that the school can request on how they're doing, or the department head can request on how they're doing with the results, and the cabinet would also look at it, too.
We look at the results of it, and particularly like, responsible in the new core value we put in, and one of the things that we put on here is, I receive appropriate timely feedback from my principal. When we sit down with the principal during their evaluation and goal setting, we look at that, and if 30% of the staff are saying, hey, I'm not getting timely feedback, we have a discussion with the principal about that, how are you giving feedback? What kind of feedback do you give? And we talk about that from a goal-setting perspective of improvement. Now, that said, let me also say, surveys are surveys. I'm going to look for other data to correlate that.
So, that's a great example. I receive appropriate and timely feedback, I like to work appropriate, I like to work timely, but a lot of times, the, 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 the,
Any other comments? I, um, I'll be brief. Um, oh, sorry. You did? I'll be brief, I, yeah, I come to this with a lot of skepticism, I have to be honest. Um, I don't value them tremendously. I would agree with Dr. Birdwell that I would need a lot of other factors to validate a type of survey like this. Certainly as parents who filled out a few, when you have those questions that have several layers, like is it this, this, and this? And that's a twine cost of how you're gonna, am I gonna say yes to this, and no to this? I'll just say yes anyway. I, that is something maybe to be careful of moving forward, is make sure those questions are, have one layer to them, so a parent doesn't have to really struggle and juggle their answer. I, on another level, I am very concerned about the timing of this survey. I appreciate and acknowledge that, you know, there's not a whole lot of questions of, are you happy? Is things going great? And that's good. I do like the focus of a lot of the questions about the data-driven instruction and, you know, those types of things that we really are trying to move forward to. But, that being said, I've used this analogy before. I, I believe, we were a very unhealthy district, and we are in the process of getting healthy. And that takes a lot of physical therapy and treatments and painful things. And it's, to me, it's like asking a patient right in the middle of some very painful physical therapy, how do you feel? That's what this was like to me a little, and I'm just gonna leave it at that for right now. This is just discussion. I am just giving, giving that info to that point. Um, oh, Ms. McCollough?
No. I'm not really making any strong suggestions of how this should look.
No, they're mean.
That's all right. I like it, I like the efforts there, that's great. Board Member Kirby, did you have a comment?
No, I wanna echo Board Member Pearlberg's sentiment about just, um, my past experience with a CFP survey, don't place a lot of value in it. Um, the other layer that you didn't mention is response rate. Which is a huge teeth of this. And I, I, I very much agree that we are in the middle of, um, we are in the middle of making changes to move the districts forward, but they are what they are, they're changing. And we know how humans react to change. And, um, the timing is just not good. And I don't, I don't know, I don't know if there's any opportunity to flex the timing. I don't know that I even want, I guess, I would just say if we don't flex the timing, that we really make sure that we evaluate the answers, along with the response rate, and in the context of the current decisions we're making. That's a point.
Actually, if I might say, the only reason that we're doing a survey is the Board Member Hartman, she's not on the panel.
That's true, she has left us.
Asked us to do one, and we're trying to very respectfully do that. This is not a good year to do a survey, because I think I could probably get the answers. But in the same hand, these are box individual principals and buildings, and they should get feedback from their staff. We're not asking whether you like the superintendent, we took all the superintendent questions out. It looks like the original survey was a superintendent's evaluation form. And, and I wanna say at this point, well, I took them out, because the teacher's gonna evaluate, but you didn't. So, we put them back in. Um, but I have to tell you that surveys vary, especially happens with other data. If somebody says that my principal's not being, um, an instructional leader, then I'm gonna look at the professional development on the campus. I'm gonna look at whether or not the principal has the training in order to do the PDP. It does sometimes create a little red flag to give us a chance to go look at some things. We look at, are you doing walks and pro-call? Are you collecting data and giving it back to teachers when you walk through? So there are some pieces that kinda red flag for us with a lot, like the backing coach principals on their leadership.
And those types of red flags are in here, you're confident that?
Yeah, they're in there.
So it's not very red flag.
They use the coach, the principal. Uh, they might use the hammer, actually, they use the coach at home. So, in that regard, I like the survey, but I, I have a hard time believing anything on a survey. I don't know that that's a definite thing. Or I just spent too many years looking at survey data that seemed the same year after year after year after year. And God bless parents for being willing to fill out the advanced accreditation surveys that we have to give them, that are very lengthy, and we're just not.
Yeah, Board Member Cravitt.
Um, what is the process for a employee retaining this survey with regard to private? Would they get it in email or something, may log in? Take, I know there's been concerns. I have heard of concerns, that, oh, they'll be able to keep, keep the survey. So that's one question. And then what state cards will there be so that people can't keep the survey more than once? I know as a parent, when I would get the survey from the district, I could log in and take that survey several times, and I did.
No, candy.
She's like, that's the worst. Here he is. Like, I know.
Pam's horrified right now.
There, uh, you can set it so that you can only get it one time from a computer. But that doesn't mean someone can't open their iPad, open their iPhone, and go on their computer at home and take it. We have had conversations, we could set it up, so it requires their ID number. But then it becomes that issue of people don't know your answers, and we've never gone down that road. So.
So yet another layer of, take it and, with the grain of?
Yeah. When we sit down, and let's say that there are a hundred teachers on a campus, and we pull it out, we say to the principal, well, you only had fifty teachers from your campus answer it. But then you have a hundred and eighty answers. And we say, okay, so this survey is no envoy. Because you don't have a hundred, you have only a hundred staff members, so obviously people did it more than us. So, that, you know, you, we plead to the professionalism of the teachers to be professional. I've had experiences in other districts where we even saw an email. In another district, where the association said, go on and take it as many times as you can. And, and so then when we, that's how I, we saw, you know, a campus of a hundred have a hundred and seventy-eight responses. So then that no envoy, the entire, so the board just threw them out, and we throw them out. So we have to ask for the professionalism, we'll work with Julie on that. We'll promote that we be professional in that process. But I have experienced exactly what you've said, multiple logins and, but the moment we ask for an ID, then people say retracting their answers. And what, you know, we don't want that, but there is that culture of distrust again. So we'll ask for professionalism and ask that they cooperate.
Board Member Becca.
Can you please, and, welcome, teachers, yeah, I think it's important to give a voice and be?
Julie, you and I discussed it, so maybe you wanna answer that.
Yeah, I think it is. I think it is, and the more detail you can get, maybe this is, I agree, you know, the survey sample, the number of responses is important to look at. In which, there could be a more response only, you know, we run ours through AKA that allows that, but they do have to log in with their ID number. I think it's a one.
One.
I personally always felt that someone's gonna ask me questions and I answer it. So that doesn't bother me, but there has been matters of the excuse of not providing feedback.
I, I would agree with that. I've been having tremendous, as a board member, a lot of feedback from teachers saying, you know, god, these surveys, of course, I don't, either don't respond or don't answer honestly, because they, if I tell them what school I'm at and how many years I've been there, and, and they figure out who I am, and that fear, that's, that's whatever. So, take it with a grain of salt.
I mean, the other thing to do is you'll pay for ten, and that's just hours and hours of interrogation, and that just doesn't, like, any trade in the ground.
So, it, and obviously, I wanna spend, and Board Member Hartman's here to kind of talk about her reasoning and rationale. And I wanna respect that, but from your staff's position, are there, are there any downsides to going ahead and putting a survey out? And are we sure this is worth the time and energy right now?
The timing is critical. I think we need to do it in April. We need to do it so the responses are back in time to talk to principals before their contract. In May, we'd like to use it as a conversation with principals. Any earlier than that, you can go ahead and figure out what your responses are gonna be. Now, I say April, why? Because I think teachers need to be contracted. See that we're living in our words, that we're doing what we say we're doing, and hopefully, that will help with the culture and climate issues. But I think April is the time to do it. I will tell you my experience also, in other districts is, teachers will say to me, I've been waiting for that survey to ask my thoughts about leadership. Are you going to do that? And I think we really need to do that every April. I think that they need to give their feedback, and it needs to be done in a manner so that the principal knows what his staff thinks.
Darren?
So, we're gonna get some feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're gonna wrap that up, just talk to some principals, talk to some teachers. I'm sure they're gonna wrap it up, Julie, some others, and all of them, and make sure that we get good feedback all the way around, and then we'll get back to them. And I apologize, but I have a phone call from my sister and mom from the hospital, so hang on mine, I'm gonna step out.
Absolutely. No problem at all, I'm sure that's, that's a big cover. Um, so we will move on to item, information discussion item 8B, update on PMA Elementary School Instructional Model. Dr. Nance?
Hello.
Yeah.
Let me ask, can you each, uh, first, we'll see if they come on up here, maybe, sure, okay? And help me answer any questions you may have. We have a short PowerPoint here for you to talk about.
Wait a second. Let's look on that first one, I'll do that for a moment.
Okay, here we go. Talk about proposal or recommendations for you as you consider the rebuild of PMA Elementary School. There's been some discussion about the concept of a traditional program in the south part of the district. We had an opportunity to have conversations at PMA with quite a few of the teachers. I spent an entire day there a couple of weeks ago at eight. And I think we talked, probably about two-thirds of the staff on an individual basis, and had conversations about where you are instructionally, how do you view traditional schooling? And, of course, there's excitement about a new school there, anything about as well. But the discussion was primarily about traditional schools. I know that PMA is probably about as close to traditional school without being an official traditional school as any school in the district. And so, the jump to traditional instruction and traditional curriculum will not be a huge leap. There are, I know there are at least sixteen or sixteen teachers that at one time had gone through a training for solenics. And I was part of that, so I know they did that. Now, I had several of those teachers during that visit say, I know what that box of stuff is. It isn't my pocket, I haven't used it for a long time. And I'd remind them, your training was a long time ago, you would have to do it again. And, okay, okay. So let us share some ideas with you about traditional school at PMA. First of all, we would like to recommend that PMA reopen as, and if you see K-5, K-6, we've had the discussion both ways there, in a new facility in August of 2018. Had the discussion, and I have to really tell you that every single conversation I had, and it gets to a point, we talked to them about grade structure. Is K-5 working for you? Will sixth graders stay? Will seventh and eighth graders stay in the form of a K-8 school? And, every single person said, we don't believe our seventh and eighth graders will stay. They are very happy with their middle school options at this point. I also asked them, and a number of them are also parents that were given this school, and live in the community, maybe as one of those people, do you hear anything in your community about a desire to go K-8? Every single person I talked to said, no, we hear nothing about that. And I started asking the question about sixth grade, well, what about sixth grade? Hasn't been that long that you have sixth graders on your campus? And it was a lot of the same discussion. No, I don't, I wouldn't keep my kids for sixth grade, because they're very happy going to their middle school and being part of the activities and athletics and the programs that the middle school offers. And so, the desire to change from K-5, I did not see that. And I'm gonna ask Amy to make a comment on that as well.
No, I, I believe that our families are really happy with our middle school option. And just like Dr. Nance said, that K-5 seems to be more of the attraction for our site based on competition and half-didry there. I have not had parents approach me with that desire for PMA to be the K-8. Our student body is very involved in their athletes and the music and their performances that they get at middle school level. So, the competition, again, has been really a key part.
If I could jump in with a question, do you know the retention rate we have of PMA fifth graders staying, either going on to Mojave or staying in our district? Do we know that number?
Dr. McCollough, I don't know if she has it right now, but she can certainly get it, she will.
All right.
While he's, while he's cooking, let me just kinda go ahead and talk about a few other pieces up here. We'd like to recommend that you don't change the PMA boundaries. When you talk about traditional schools, some districts have traditional schools that are schools of choice. Other districts keep the boundaries intact. And it's a neighborhood school, but it's also a traditional school, open to open enrollment from other places. And our recommendation is that we not disrupt the current PMA boundaries that are in place, if those stay the same. Like to talk a little bit about a sister school. My experience, and I've worked with traditional schools now in four different districts, is that when a traditional school is established, you will always have a handful of folks that don't wanna go there. Especially if you have your own boundary, because that's their home school. A choice school doesn't have that issue, because you just don't choose to go there. But when you have boundaries for a school, typically, you will have a very few, in my experience, a very few, that would choose to go to a different school. And I believe that in most cases, we need to say, we will bus you to a particular sister school. And I'm not here to say what school that would be at this point. We are a year out from, from some of these things taking place. But that transportation we provided from PMA to that sister school, I can tell you that in my experience doing this, I never needed more than a van to do so. There were never more than six or seven kids from the entire school whose families chose to go to our house.
Board Member Kirby.
So, um, operationally, Dr. Nance, how would that transportation to the sister school work? Would it be, because it sounds like more, more buses, more transportation?
There would be some additional transportation. And like I said, it's typically not gonna require a large school bus to do so. A van could do it, certainly, you would be a driver, you would even avail yourself to do so.
So you have the route in the neighborhood that go to PMA?
Yes.
But then you have another route that goes through the entire neighborhood and goes to a sister school?
And that is problematic, because right now, our schools start at the same time. So in order to be transported from home to PMA and get on another bus or van to be transported to the next school, it will never be on time.
And that's not what I said, though.
Okay, I'm not sure I did.
So, that is an option. But what I was asking is, do you have buses that will run the PMA neighborhood to PMA? And then have another bus that runs the PMA neighborhood to the sister school?
Board Member Kirby, if you had enough kids to justify that, you could.
Or a van, or whatever.
Or a van, or whatever.
Is it a separate vehicle?
Talking about picking kids up over here and over here, and way over here, and, you know, Boston, and some days it's miles from each other, unless you have enough in one area, that would become problematic. And I can't answer the transportation director's issues at this point, it's certainly something we should do.
So if they're both problematic, how does it work?
What I've seen happen in other districts would be, parents would get their students to the school, and at a designated time, other than our bus, would deliver students from one school to the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then lastly, that the seventeen, eighteen school year, we use for teacher training and staff development for the PMA teachers centered around traditional school and philosophy. The really nice thing we're talking about here is we have time. We have training time, we have development time, we have time to purchase material, implement them, along with the training. Um, that would start probably this summer, once that decision is made. Did you have anything to add?
Absolutely. We are seeing matriculation rates run around from twenty-ten to twenty-fifteen, which has cut down to around ninety percent. So it's a pretty good statistic.
The average for the district is?
That's already in. Could I ask about fourth and fifth? Okay. In the mean, in the district, usually see, we usually see the draw.
Um, Board Member Cravitt, do you have questions?
Um, did you suggest with teachers or also with parents and gardeners?
My conversations were with staff members at the school. I have to turn it over to Amy.
And this juncture has really just been site-based conversation about the traditional model, turning the shifts and the instructions, things of that nature. But this juncture, the bulk of our conversation happens.
So we don't know yet whether the community agrees with this. I mean, if teachers do, and that's great, don't get me wrong.
We have not normally done that, you know. Um, I just wanna go back to, this, this is not a lot of change to what's happening on the field today. Okay, let me talk a little bit about what traditional school looks like, what would it look like at PMA? And these are the ideas and the conversations that we've had so far. This is very common, too, and we'll see in a traditional elementary school, pretty much anywhere. Um, facts and math, that is a program that you will see typically in most traditional elementary schools. It's what shiny end is in grade eight or six. Solenics typically used in traditional elementary schools, and we would be training teachers on both facts and math and solenics and moving ahead. teachers on both facts and math and Spalding Phonics and moving ahead. I would love to see that training happen sooner than later so that as we move through the next school year, some of that could already be implemented as we look towards opening a new school the following year. Social studies and science, you're going to see a traditional school follow the district curriculum, very little difference in the curriculum itself, same specials as other elementary schools, objectives, all this direct instruction, again, and we hope that's happening everywhere, but certainly there'd be an emphasis on it. Required teachers group planning and consistency in lesson presentation. I'm going to have Amy talk a little bit about that, because my conversations seem to be you're already doing that.
Yeah, our teachers are already meeting in professionalized communities in their PLTs. They plan, they calendar, and map out, they have themselves days twice a year to do that. So they're mapping out their instructions, and they're instincting one another. They do common formative assessments together, which then basically dictates their instructions. And so they're planning those out, they're working together. So in order to do those common formative assessments and to have data dialogue about them, they have to be in line with one another. Otherwise, when they sit and look at their data, they can't determine basically where strengths and weaknesses in our instruction, where they need to reteach, where they need to extend that lesson. And so they are already meeting in PLTs once a week, talking about student instructions that they're planning, they're doing their unit study together for PLA, they're mapping those out, they're sharing those materials. They're in line right now with TAs, one another. So those things are already happening, that's already common.
Very little change we mostly needed in that. Traditional classroom setup, what that means is that in a traditional elementary school, the majority of the instruction is teacher-led. That doesn't necessarily mean all the desks are in rows, but all facing the teacher. And so you're going to see some different configurations, but primarily set up so the teacher directs the instruction is the focus. Minimal disruptions to instructional time by non-curricular activities, valuing time, valuing instructional time is really important in a traditional school. Well, it's really important in every school, but there's a focus on it in traditional schools. So that would be up to the staff, working with the principal, to make sure that time is really used wisely throughout the day with minimal disruptions. And then as we're looking for consistency in homework and the way instruction happens in classrooms, certainly there would be an emphasis on finding ways to train parents on how to help students with homework, helping parents understand what Spalding Phonics and Facts and Math is all about, and having those evening exams in those times for parents to get together. And to be relaxed, make the materials to use at home and do those kinds of things as well.
Could I ask a question? Well, remember Kirby, so Cheyenne, as a traditional school in our district, is held in very high regard by their community as well as the district at large. If you go back to the prior slide, what you've described here in K five or K six, so I'm taking seven, eight off for this question, is this what Cheyenne's doing? Or is Cheyenne doing this plus something or not all of this? Does it matter?
No, this is very, very similar to what we see happening in Cheyenne as far as its structure. Absolutely.
Because, and maybe in, I hear the community at Cheyenne, they really, they value their humanities classes, but is that a seven, eight?
Yes.
Is that a middle school?
Yes.
Okay. And then what about language?
Well, again, we would make sure that the world language piece is equitable to any other elementary school in the district. And I know that Dr. McNeil's been working on that, and it already happens.
Okay, but is it, does it start the same as when Cheyenne starts it? Is it the same, or is it different? Is Cheyenne different than every other, I'm sorry?
Is it K five or is it? But I think the question is happening at Cheyenne.
Yeah, what's happening at Cheyenne?
I don't understand if they have world language at elementary.
It's not different.
I can take it.
Oh, it is different. We've got a Cheyenne teacher, can she answer?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven, eight, and then the eighth grade. So it's a middle school.
It's only middle. So it's a middle school model. But they don't, so Cheyenne does not have an elementary language. So what you're saying is, is this?
Well, what's they now to do?
So they keep it. So then what would they, what would this Pima traditional not have that Cheyenne does have?
That's K three.
What does Cheyenne do in that, in the time, the minute that Pima would use for elementary language?
It's a special.
What is Cheyenne doing?
More music or more art? It's a trade-off, special time.
They have a K rotation for specials, and so they could graduate through to the R.
Okay, so it's more special.
So it's really, it's really the same thing as one series of specials.
Okay. Thank you, I was unclear on my question, but thank you, I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
You don't worry.
Yes.
And I will say that while the Cheyenne teacher's here, when we visited Cheyenne, the teachers just immediately volunteered to say, it's Pima's distraction, we are here for them, we have the students trained as instructors, and we would love to have them come to our classrooms and be able to have conversations with them about.
Thank you.
And gracious, gracious, gracious.
Remember, second.
So as I look at this, and I am somebody who actually, this is an individualized traditional method, but one of the things that I think that we're trying to do is be a choice district, and who's got competitive talent. And just looking at this, I don't think this makes this competitive. It actually, somebody who has chosen one of my kids to run the school, it doesn't give me everything else that I could get at one of the charter schools. And it doesn't do two things. One is, it looks like a model from an old model. Even the new charter schools have some innovation in it, even though they're using very traditional facts and qualities. But this doesn't have a vision of grade books, goodness, which is the communities you're talking about, which are often. It's also, when you say, but I think what really hit in heart, it didn't feel good, traditional classroom setup, objective, there's a direct instruction. Even though in those schools, if you walk in, it may be set up this way, and I know it's not how the desks are set up, and the teacher is giving direct instruction, but what's happening is the traditional method. The kids are answering the questions instead of this. When I do this, I think that teachers are confront that traditional method. And even though you want a traditional structure with Spalding, the fact, and parents are wanting their kids to really get that cognitive thinking, and would you get with the grade book? I'm not seeing that. So I think even if it's from a marketing standpoint, you're thinking you're going to, you need to be putting that in, otherwise, I'm probably just going to go to my church.
Let me respond to that. Or, or Rebecca, when you're talking about our instruction strategies, we should be doing it at all of our schools. It has nothing to do with the traditional model. It has to do with good instruction. And those are things, I absolutely agree with you, with further academic achievement forever being used. And so it's something we need to work on at cost of board to improve instruction and academic achievement at all.
So now let me talk about this curriculum piece of that. We've challenged first, and Dr. Benson is working on this, a backwards design of the AP honors model. Because once you backwards design that, you've got to start getting the grade books in. So, and Dr. McCollough, I've been prioritizing which teachers have had an emphasis and conversations with, eventually we've got to get more of the grade books, but it's not just in the traditional, it's in all of our schools. So if we do that curriculum design, and then the other piece of that, I'll throw one more piece in, the Greek and Latin, teaching the Greek and Latin roots has got to come back as well. And so that's another piece that Dr. Benson and I have discussed. So as we're making the curricular movements, you're going to see some of those get integrated into the curriculum.
All right.
Let me go back a piece that I should have mentioned, and I really did. I mean, Facts and Math, the goal of Facts and Math is to have every student in the school working a year ahead. And when you see traditional schools that have been around for a while, that is pretty close to happening. That is our goal, is that eventually, now certainly in year one, you're never going to get to a year ahead, in year two, you're going to get closer. By about year three and year four, you can be there if you do it the right way. And so that is something that would be a goal, I would hope any traditional school uses Facts and Math, because it's something that makes it a little easier to do because of the spiral. Spiral way, Facts and Math, those kids are the great. The goal is to prepare kids so that when they leave Pima, they're ready for pre-algebra and sixth grade, algebra and seventh grade, geometry. So that would be the ultimate goal. Will you get every kid there? Not every one of them. Will you do it the first year? No, but that's the, that's the goal. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Can I ask a quick question to that point? So again, I think for our parents, that clear path is always very important. We are talking about a K five or a K six. Is there that clear path? When you talk about, you know, pre-algebra, sixth grade, seventh grade, is that very clear at Mojave? Very, is it happening already? That type of thing, like they can already see? That is exactly what all gets continued on at Mojave for these parents?
Well, again, we will eventually.
Eventually.
Eventually get there. And I can tell you, Dr. Wong, working with a gifted specialist right now at our elementary schools, is working on accelerating math instruction. So that not just our traditional schools, but that certain capable, hardworking, motivated kids at all of our schools that are willing to get to that point can do so. And so we hope to be able to drastically increase the number of seventh graders in algebra, for example, over the next few years. It's going to take a little while to get there.
Our goal as a district, long-term, should be that all eighth graders are in algebra.
Yes.
Now, it'll take a while to get there, and if we can get ninety percent of them there, eight percent be thrilled. There are districts who refuse to teach algebra in eighth grade, but the districts who are putting out high academic achievement, one of the core lists that we look for are that eighth graders have hit algebra and are successful, are successful. So that's the meaningful piece. That should be our goal as an entire district, that all eighth graders should be aiming towards algebra. And then you know that you're getting the academic career that you need to be getting as you go in the high school. We're not there by any means.
So, remember Kirby. I want to come back to, unless you want to wait, the K five, K six, K eight question. And again, because our one traditional school in the district is very successful, very highly regarded, and is a K eight, how do you respond to the community that what we all believe is a very successful model, it's been the discussion for years, why don't we just replicate Cheyenne? Why, what's your answer? Why are we not replicating Cheyenne?
And I have to come back to the question for you. Why do you think it's more successful? What makes it more successful than another K eight school or another elementary, middle school combination?
Their test scores. Oh, we're at school-wide, and I'm not looking at it grade level by grade level. Their test scores are higher, their enrollment's higher, and their commute, the street talk, the soccer talk, is very highly regarded in the whole district. And they have, and they are constantly getting new kids trying to get in there.
And I have to say, I think that's a fair comparison, compare one side of the district to another. You're talking about very, very different issues. You're talking about a Title I school versus a school with very, very low free reading interest rate. You're talking about some differences in the makeup of the student model. There's a very big difference. So I don't know what I would, I'd be into higher achieving school versus a lower achieving school. What I would look at is, are students staying there more than they do within our other teacher patterns?
I think the other piece that has not been looked at, if I might say, is that Cheyenne, there is a, a belief that Cheyenne has, because people have said, Cheyenne's the top-scoring middle school in the district. And the answer to that is, that's not true. The top-scoring in English is Mountain Side Middle School are the top-scoring students in the seventh and eighth grade. There are three, three schools that score continuously high in there, and Dr. McCollough, correct me if I read my data wrong, but Copper Ridge, Mountain Side, and Cheyenne go back and forth between the top of that, and you're talking about three totally separate models. So one's a middle school, one's a K eight, and one's a traditional. And so part of, so you have to look beyond just, so, but the reputation is that this is our top-scoring school in the district. And they're a great school, and they're doing well, but they're not the top-scoring middle school in the district. They, they fluctuate that, but they're in high competition to two other schools. And the other one is Mojave? Coca-Pops, I think, Coca-Pops. And so part of that is kids who come from affluent families and communities with an already natural desire and respect of education and a vision that I'm going to go beyond high school, so I'm learning here now and I'm accelerating. So some would say, well, Mountain Side did really well in language arts because of the fidelity of springboard. Well, that's about the teacher and the quality of the teacher, not necessarily the curriculum. Because I can give you another curriculum, and I can give you the grade books curriculum, and I can get the same high performance.
Right.
So the teacher matters, the curriculum matters, and what a child and a family bring to that learning matters. We, in a, in a title school, are going to fill gaps, make up lost reading and exposure to reading from an earlier, much earlier age in a Title I child. The vocabulary needs to be closed, the ability to write at a higher level has to be closed. So there are more elements we're dealing with. So as Dr. Nance was saying, to compare the title school to the affluent community is somewhat unfair at this stage. So you say, why wouldn't I just duplicate it? You're not the same population, you should be offering a similar opportunity. But seven, eight-wise, that curriculum is being taught at Mojave as well. The same curriculum is being taught at Cheyenne is being taught at Mojave.
And how is Mojave compared to Cheyenne?
So Mojave's got a very different demographic.
So how does Mojave then compare to Cicero or Noah Webster? Same demographic, have we looked at that?
I'm.
Noah Webster, Daniel Webster's a historic figure. Noah Webster. Noah Webster. But it's just, I guess, I just want to, I want to, I don't, I accept your answer, I get it. But I, we have, we heard it with Ho Ho Combs and Supai. And I'm telling you, we have lost so many families who, even though Mojave has improved tremendously, I'm talking ten years ago, the flight started because they didn't want to go to Mojave. It's that demographic. And if we can prove that today, we are delivering a better seven, eight academic achievement than where you went when you left it, we need to get that message out there. And if we can't prove it, then we need to figure that out, not only in Supai, but also at Mojave and whatever other middle schools that.
The retention rate of ninety percent is really, is really low.
But, but hang on a second, I got to respond to that. And it's, but you're, you've already lost everybody. You're retaining, you're retaining this narrow sliver of your community that you've kept. But what is our capture rate? That's the question. What's our capture rate? So we're, we're retaining those that we've captured, and we've lost this other piece.
And although retention is important, I mean, I'm going to go back to something Mrs. Beckham said. If we want to be the choice, and I don't want you to choose Noah Webster, and I don't want you to choose Greyhards, and I don't want you to choose Vezes, but I want you to choose that in your school, there's a greater rating of the bar. Now, away from the K eight message, I think we need to spend next year, and I talked with the academic leadership team, studying the middle school model, whether you're in a seven, eight, or a six, eight. We, as a district, must spend some time looking at what's happening in the middle school. And we must take time, because it really doesn't matter whether you're the K eight structure or you're the middle structure, what are we doing academically? So let's study the core piece, but let's also study the elective piece, and let's study how well students are doing in a K eight Copper Ridge versus to a middle school model versus to Cheyenne's traditional. Are there differences where kids are accelerating because we have a different structure or different opportunities? But it's going to be very much based on, what are we doing academically with the students? And recently I've discovered that there are some issues within the middle school that need to be addressed. Everything from students being placed in TAs where there should be no TAs, that means like sitting for forty-five minutes without instruction, to honors classes that are labeled honors that aren't honors. Those are all affecting the academic careers in a level. And. Those are all affecting the academic rigor in the level. And then, once you get that structure fixed for all, then you need to say, have I created a pathway choice for accelerated learning? And that is part of that twelve-month conversation that we ought to embark on over the next twelve months as a district. And I challenged our academic learning team to do that, and I got a huge support from everybody in the room that that is a really critical issue. Yes, it is. So as the academic leaders in this district, we're going to really tackle that, and it's a, a twelve-month strong study about what's happening in the middle level. But we are not getting it done at the middle level. Academic rigor is not there. We're feeling it in the high school, we're also seeing it academically, we see scores beginning to go up in the elementaries, and then we see the drop off six, seven, and eight. And that should not happen, and that doesn't have to happen like that if we do things properly in our curricular and our supportive teachers at the middle level.
Thank you.
And I just want to add to that, too. When you, when you look at the, probably the hallmark curriculum of a traditional school is that math and Spalding. Those are only elementary books. And I believe Cheyenne is the sixth grade. Spalding doesn't even publish material beyond sixth grade. You do review them. And then when you get to the facts and math piece, what we want to have happen is that students are in pre-algebra, algebra, and geometry once they get to that middle school level. And we have district adopted pre-algebra, algebra, geometry textbooks that are used across all of those programs, whether it be a high school or a middle school. So that program has been pretty centralized across all of our schools.
Thank you.
Let me talk to you real quickly about what is the cost. Certainly you have to buy some of your materials and train your teachers. And so you already look at the cost of the, really it's buying the facts and materials for an entire school of students, it's providing training. Saxon doesn't provide a lot of training, they would have to do a lot of in-house pieces with that, so training how to read your manuals and do that kind of thing. But there's not a lot of external training that I've been able to find. Spalding phonics is an intensive training that teachers go through, and it's typically over a two-year period, or two parts that can be done in the summer, it can be done in the after-school day, and you need to work with the teachers to find out what they would refer to do. So you don't want to pay teachers to do that. If we're paying them, if they're coming in the summer and they're in training, you don't want to go pay them to do that. So that would be the cost there. And then there's some ongoing material cost for a school in size of Pima, and that's based on numbers of students. We really feel like we can take the Saxon books and Saxon curriculum out of our capital and the yellow, which are our students, and then we can use our B C clutch for the training pieces.
So that the board has the full answer on this. We won't hear that until a math aspect comes out of it. Cheyenne did not have the same situation when they started, and we are supporting them now. And I, I just want you to know that I may hear from community members, well, hey, we can start, Cheyenne didn't get that, but I want you to know, we are now picking up and supporting Cheyenne in a much better fashion than it has been in the past, including with the, with the construction that's going to happen on Cheyenne's campus, the science support that that campus is going to give is going to be amazing. So, but I want to be very clear about that, that you may hear from the community members now, that we didn't get that support, we know that, and we're very sorry about that. But going forward, we are supporting.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was very surprised in our session with the Cheyenne principal earlier, my, my time, coming back to Scottville, that most of that came from their parents. You know, this is our curriculum we're providing for the school, district is paid for, and we now do.
Remember Beckham?
So would you say that we send thirty thousand at Cheyenne now, on an ongoing basis, these members?
Well, well, now it's training.
If they add on materials...
Training would be for new people if they come around.
There's also some add-on materials that they need every year, and they've had to go to their PTO year after year to ask for that. We are now putting it into our capital dollars and we're taking care of it for them. I was shocked to find out when I got here as well, it was like, what, what do you mean?
Well, and, I'm sorry, and just clarify, though, that thirty thousand for the tiers, that is the entire staff for the first, first two years, and then it will drop off after that as it's just new staff, correct? Okay, all right.
And refreshing training, but it's more material driven that we're supporting Cheyenne with it.
Remember Beckham?
So the other, the other thing about the traditional method, we brought it up when you talked about the demographics. Demographics go very well up in the Cheyenne area. You could have some, like the Title I school, kids that are not used to the discipline and the sitting for long to do the homework, the Saxon, and the Spalding, and the... So I would like to get some additional funding for those, for families. I love how you had, you know, training for the parents, but there's no money for that. I would like to add some funds for the training and for the actual support for the kids to be enough, because we know the Title I are not going to free school. So those who thought, to give them support, because they can do.
I, I, I like that sentiment very much, but I will speak, we were a Title I school when my children went there, started. And I saw no problem, really, with the community embracing the expectations of the school. That, I mean, that demographic existed then, it's fairly similar now, I would assume, I believe, from what I've heard. They, they embraced the expectations, they embraced the worth, they embraced the culture on the campus, and that Title I factor, I didn't ever see it being a problem. To me, it, it fits wonderfully well. I'll just throw that out as someone who lived it.
Then why are you... Why wouldn't you expect the same support? Then you have to...
Well, we'll get there, but you have to close the gap, is what we're saying. You have to, you have to...
Right, and I, I want to be able to close that gap. You can't do that without additional funding.
But if I can jump in, back in the day, hate to say it that way, but Noah, Noah fans, I mean, I'm sorry, but, but I'm familiar with those years, not, not these current years. Our test scores were very competitive.
And they, they remain competitive.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't trying to suggest that, I was just, I only know my experience. Yeah.
Mrs. Beckham? I just want to say something to you here that I think is really important, and I need you on with something that's critical. We should never lower expectations of kids of Title I.
Right.
It's one of the greatest flaws of our system is to say because of the child's rooftop or the environment which they come from, that they can't. So to your point, you're actually right, we should be expecting that. It's going to take some time to close some of those because there are definite things that you do in, and there's wonderful, wonderful research behind working with kids in poverty that will, will help embrace it. But there are also other programs and agencies that actually support, and they will, they will help us provide readers for young children, they give away books for families, and we'll be tapping all of those resources to support those families where the need is at. And the parenting classes are critical. The other piece that we're working on, remember that expansion of preschool, expanding our Title I preschools, and expanding some summertime preschool opportunities, all of those will play into closing those gaps. But we should never lower the academic expectations of the child based on a Title School or not. And that's one of the great things, that, that Pima has had some historical scores equal to its peers of affluent community, and that's what we're, we're aiming to get back to.
But I just, I apologize, but I didn't heard Amy and Pam differently.
I, I was asking, I, I basically was addressing the six, seven, and eights, which are currently at Mojave, not Pima.
So she, she's looking at the current numbers, and I'm showing the current academic numbers. If you don't change the structure and the expectations, we will continue to see a gap in the South to the North because of, of the other factors. If you change the expectations and you change the instructional processes and fidelity to it, you will equalize that. The great, the great equalizer in our society for kids of poverty is in education. We've got to bring the South end up and set the same expectations that we set for the North end, and, and we can get there. Did I give the impression that...
No, no, no. No, I'm reemphasizing, no, no, I'm just reemphasizing what you said.
Okay.
From a different perspective, because there were two different conversations. Yours was about the current kids today, yours is about as we go forward, and I wanted to say, you're spot on, let's not lose your point.
Well, then, I think we should add some funds.
The Title I funds are for...
Oh, yes, that's correct. That's very true.
They receive additional funding if ten of our schools in the district knew. And what you're talking about is exactly what that Title I funding should be for. All right. On this.
Excellent.
Let's talk about uniforms for a minute. Because everyone has a different perspective on uniforms. Some traditional schools do not have specific uniforms, others do. It really becomes a community decision as to, number one, whether or not you have students in uniforms, or number two, what do they look like, and how much variety would there be? What Amy and I talked about is that really is something that needs to take place over the course of the next school year, as they look at the, would be the eighteen, nineteen school year. And so we're asking that that be given to the community to talk about and then decided over time. I don't know of any research that shows that the uniforms itself, the community is not academic achieved. It's out there, I don't know where it is. But there's a perception and a marketing piece, and there's other things that go into play when you're talking about uniforms. So we were just suggesting that that happens later.
And if I were still a Pima parent, I'd vote for a uniform personally. It's easier.
And I agree, all three of, all three of my children went through traditional elementary schools with the uniforms.
That's, it's so easy, that's, exactly. I'd vote yes in a heartbeat, so easy.
Finally, including the communication process has to be ongoing. Do you give approval next Tuesday to move ahead with the reconstruction of Pima, which would be designated and when it opens as a traditional school? We would start that communication process. One of the first things we would do is make sure we put together a, a comprehensive question and answer document, and we would start collecting issues that come up, from teachers' questions, from parents, and we would try to answer and make that available to anyone that wants to know about it. Also through parent meetings, there can be some discussion times, there can be some question and answer times about traditional school. We want to make sure that the teachers fully understand the process this spring, because we may want to start some of the training this, this coming summer and as school starts in the fall. So that understanding on the part of the teachers needs to happen right away. Again, the parent training on Spalding and Saxon, and traditional school philosophy and expectations throughout the next school year as we prepare to open up. And then again, the uniform discussion with that community, again, over the course of the next school year. A really nice thing we have here is the gift of time to do this right and make it happen the right way. So Amy and I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Remember Kirby? Okay, so I know you said this, but remind me again, Saxon-Spalding curriculum goes through fifth grade or sixth grade?
It's designed to go through sixth grade.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Wasn't it Beckham?
Would the actual building be built any differently than the traditional model?
Not today.
The equality that we build of the other elementary schools taken into consideration?
Well, the only thing you might want to think about is, if you expect an increase in enrollment, you can make it a little bigger than what it is right now. That would be the only consideration.
I'm sorry, I have another question. Sorry, I'm, so if Saxon-Spalding is designed to go through sixth grade, I guess more of a Saxon question. And we only have Pima go through fifth grade, so they have Saxon through fifth grade, have we studied what math those kids will then get at Mojave in sixth grade, and will that keep them on the trajectory? Or is it going to create a gap of some sort?
Right. Every traditional I'm familiar with, they're elementary students, they're elementary. Other than Cheyenne, Cheyenne is the only traditional school that I've ever been associated with in five districts that went beyond sixth grade. I work up to five. Most of my familiarity is with K six elementary schools. What would happen at the beginning, they would move into a sixth, whatever the district's sixth grade math curriculum is, and I, I don't think this is, I don't think it's a problem. Eventually, the goal would be to move them into a pre-algebra sixth grade course, once we get those elementary students there.
So then what happens if we make it a K six? What math do they go into in seventh grade? I, I guess, how do we lessen the...
It's, it's the same way I answered your question. Initially, they would be going into what is the seventh grade math for most students. So some would be ready for pre-algebra, depending on the student. Eventually, we want all of them to be able to move into a higher level math as seventh graders. But that's going to take a few years to get...
And, and so after that, where the, the few years have passed, and we've gotten the traction that we're looking for, if we had K six at Pima...
Pre-algebra fifty-sixth.
Pre-algebra, right, that's a K five at Pima.
If it were K six, pre-algebra would be sixth grade for many kids, eventually.
At a Pima traditional, not sixth grade Saxon?
I would, now, if they're ready for pre-algebra, teach them pre-algebra, let's do it.
There is no sixth grade Saxon.
Oh, I thought, oh, okay. That's, okay, I didn't miss that. I thought Saxon went through sixth grade.
It, it's published.
I was right, okay. Remember Beckham?
As far as Kirby is, is right, because this happened to our children at...
In Swinburne.
We were a grade ahead in our math. And when we went on to Coca-Cola, that became one of the problems that we had the exit, because they were not on top of being replaced in that higher math.
That shouldn't have ever happened.
No, I know, but that's the answer that Pam's looking for. There will be, because we will recognize that the, the students coming out of Pima will be a grade ahead, so therefore there will be curriculum classes for you to go to Mojave, Rock. So that is synonymous with the situation in the pre-algebra.
Once they're ready, they'll be there.
That will be the only...
And, and I think that is important, that our parents can see, eventually, or very, very soon, a very clear path of where they go after that K five or that K eight. But can I, okay, remember Kirby? Okay, and this is, this is really important, because there is, that's, that was real, and it was painful. But I just don't want us to put ourselves into a situation where we have this, this group of Pima cohorts that goes into Mojave, they're a grade level ahead in, ahead in math, and so maybe we do have classes for them, but because it's only one of the three middle school, or three elementaries that feed into Mojave, there isn't enough math to actually give them the math level that they're at. Does that make sense?
That's actually the joy of going into Mojave is that there is enough.
But if the other elementary schools are not a grade ahead, it won't be there. Not the last year.
Those people are seventh grade.
But what about eighth grade? What about those teens, they keep going at grade...
They get bused to the high school like they do now. If you're...
Once you have enough, you operate after middle school.
Is one, is one cohort of an elementary school enough by the cut? So it's fine when they're, get there at sixth grade, it's fine at seventh grade, it's when it's eighth grade, and there are grade level ahead, and the rest, and the rest of them are not, what do we do?
Well, if you're at Coca-Cola, you get, you get bused to Chaffaral. So if you're at Mojave, you get bused to the store.
You get bused to the world. And you remember, there are, there are, and there are going to be students ahead at, coming from Pima, or coming from Pablo, I mean, because you just have those kids that are gifted more than... Have those kids that are, are gifted, so they will join together.
Thanks. It's a bit hot in here, and the AC shut off.
Oh, thank you. I, I'm sorry for laboring this, but I just want to make sure.
We want to make sure that's the program.
I, yeah, yeah, which is true. No, no, that's, that is, sidebar, remember Kirby, I agree with you that we really want to make sure there is a place for these students to go that keeps it going, that keeps that academic achievement going, that focus going. I think that's important.
Okay.
Anything else after the uniforms? You already did the communication. Thank you. Well, maybe before we sit down, so this is slated to be an agenda item, I mean, sorry, an action item on Tuesday night.
Yes, action.
An action item. Just want to be clear, this is that for our board.